This meeting of the Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 5:32 PM Tuesday, October 17th, 2017 in room 137 of the Edison Building. Present at the board is Mr. Michael Munoz, Superintendent of Schools and a non-voting ex officio member of the board. Also present is Ms. Wendy Edgar, the Assistant Board Clerk. Ms. Edgar, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Barlow?
Here.
Mrs. Becker?
Here.
Ms. Marvin? Mr. Schlusner?
Here.
Ms. Seelinger?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Chair Workman?
Here.
Mr. Munoz.
Yes, tonight we have the pleasure to be led in the pledge by Bamber Valley Second Grade Lisa Roloff's classroom, so you guys can meet me up to the flag.
Wendy, 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 I can't get on the, I can't get into the talks.
You can't get into the talks? Are you connected to wireless?
Two point oh one, approval of the agenda. This is an action item, Mr. Munoz.
Yeah, there are two changes in the agenda. Item seven point zero five, closed session for expulsion, and seven point oh six, expulsion of student C-17 have been added to the agenda.
With approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Announcements and communications, three point oh one, bullying prevention month, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, this month we are celebrating bullying prevention month, and we thought we would have the middle school principals come up and share a little bit about what they're doing in their sites. So I'm gonna have, if the middle school principals can come on up, I only have one name on my sheet, but it look, I think there's probably several of you that are gonna present.
You have a PowerPoint?
Yes.
Hang on.
There it is. There it is. You guys have the clicker over there?
I think there's a clicker there.
There you go.
All right. Good evening, School Board, Chair Ecker. The four of us have been communicating since Jackie asked us to give you a presentation on what we've been doing, so we put together, you know, some information about what each building is doing, and some of us are doing things that are the same. So, at Willow, Officer Kelly, Officer Pat Kelly, who's our liaison, has, is doing a presentation to all of our sixth grade students, and then he'll do a presentation, a separate one for our seventh and eighth grade students. To the sixth graders, he really is talking about, you know, general kindness, kinds of information about, you know, what does a liaison do, and how do they help support our students in ways that they can be kind and positive to each other. Our seventh and eighth graders, he has a different kind of presentation about cyberbullying and ways that they can stay safe, help out their friends, and make good responsible choices, and ways that they can get support. Many of us are doing the United Day on October 25th, where you wear and share orange, so I know that, I think there's all four of us are doing that activity on the 25th, so we'll be celebrating that with our students and staff alike. Couple of the things that we're doing at Willow, PBIS lessons, we do once a week, and our lessons are focused every, every week this month on bullying prevention, things that students can do, and activities we can do in the building and in the community to support other ways that students can behave, and safe learning, kinds of things that they need to do in the school and also in the community. And ways that we can have our students report bullying or concerns, we use a QR code in our building that is posted all over the place, so students can report something, get to a counselor or administrator or someone else in the building anonymously, and then we'll make contact with them, but do it when we don't call them out of class. So it's, those are some of the things that we're doing. Kim was just coming. Wait, what?
Okay, so John Adams will be doing the Unity Day on October 25th, much like Willow Creek is doing. We continue to have ongoing lessons about the issues surrounding bullying, and how kids can respond, and help prevent bystander power, those type of things. And we also, much like Kellogg, we have a box that students can put comments, or if they're having a problem, in, and then we check. So we do ongoing things throughout the year. We're also, just found out today that the teachers wanna do students making posters, so next week they'll, I don't have it on there, 'cause I just found out about it, they have asked my permission today if students could make posters about anti-bullying and put them up during the last couple weeks of October.
Good evening. At Kellogg Middle School, we're doing a number of things for October for Bullying Prevention Month as well. Currently, we have, we've restructured all of our PBIS committees this year at the staff level, and one is dedicated strictly to bullying prevention, and working with students on that, and we're developing a student committee as well. Right now, the two of them are sponsoring a T-shirt contest, since we're designing an anti-bullying themed T-shirt, they'll be available for students. The Anti-Bullying Committee is also developing lessons, they'll be deployed in Target classes, and also in our morning news show, The Comic Castle. We're also participating in the Unity Day on October 25th, so there's gonna be a lot of orange in all of the middle schools that day. And, you know, as Nancy and Kim were saying, you know, bullying prevention is not strictly limited to one month, it's a year-round activity, and it's something we're doing all the time. So our bullying prevention lessons continue throughout the year. We're also working really hard this year to establish a cohort of student leaders who can role model good citizenship, positive behaviors around the school, serve as mentors for our younger students. Our seventh graders participate in Youth Frontier's Courage Retreat in February, and that's really about learning to stand up for one another and for yourselves, and looking out and being a good citizen, and creating community. We've worked really hard to make it easier to report bullying, we don't have the QR codes yet, but right now we do have the bully boxes that are on the building, students can drop a note anonymously, and then we address those and reach checklists pretty darn frequently.
Thank you again for having us all. At Fidel, echoing a lot of things that are going on at the other schools, we've done a few spin, some fun whimsical things, saying it takes someone who's really special and almost like celebrity status to stand up to bullying. So we had Famously Kind, where we did the green screen photo shoot, where you could pick your background and have your photo taken with a famous YouTuber, or someone from older times, for those of us who wanted to connect with our own roots. Our eighth grade adopted hallway kindness, where in between each hour, they did like random act of kindness to all the younger kids. Sometimes it was handing out a piece of candy, or giving high fives to everyone, giving positive comments, and just really lifted up the whole spirit of the school. We moved our seventh grade courage retreat to October, to really hit home, this is the month to talk about it, start the conversation, and ignite it throughout the entire year. It was a great event last Friday, kids came back energized, recharged, and they're talking about it this week, and they're gonna be talking about that meaningful experience for quite a bit of time to come. That's what's happened thus far. We have tomorrow, if anyone's not busy, we're doing lunch karaoke. You can get up there, and we're just all kind of banding together, it's also a day celebrating our GSA club. And along with Unity Day, we're gonna have a specific walk, where the seventh grade is just gonna unite together, all kind of just spend some time walking, talking about that experience from the courage retreat, and how they can impact things in our school still moving forward. Our counselors are doing each grade level a whole week of the anti-bullying lessons as well, as marrying our PBIS theme of the week to anti-bullying themes. This week says courage, having the courage to stand up for someone else and yourself, and report things that are going on. And we have Falcon's Crest, a non-award winning episode series for bullying prevention, but it's a lot of fun, the staff gets into it, and our student council is either gonna make their own Falcon Crest episode to talk about some of their students' school board issues and take that further, so. And just here's some of the example of the fun pictures kids could dress up, this is some of our sixth graders with Full House, and they just had a great time, and wanted to have fun, and say, we're standing up for this, and we're absolutely there, so. Those are some of the things we've got going on.
Hi, May.
Sure.
I'm not good at karaoke, so you probably won't see me tomorrow. But how can we, as a school board, support you beyond the month of October and throughout the school year, in this effort of anti-bullying?
Well, one of the things that we're just exploring at John Adams is reaching out to some community partners to see if we can get some presentations in about the appropriate use of social media. Mayo has a team that comes out, and so I've had some preliminary conversations with them, don't know when that will happen, but we want to have that, talk about, 'cause a lot of our bullying happens over social media. So I think it's helping us develop and know those resources and access resources. So we're just beginning to see if we can get community resources to help us.
One of the things that we did at Willow this fall, well, two of the things, we went to Nobels in our building, which really helped with our students getting to classes on time, believe that or not. But the other thing we did is our students have to put their cellphones away, they can get them out at lunchtime, but the rest of the day they're put away, and we've noticed a very dramatic decrease in the kinds of activities that generally happen on the cellphones when they're, you know, either planning something not good to happen in the building, or, you know, texting outside, or just not paying attention in the classroom. So we've had a lot of very positive response from parents about doing, just making that move to eliminate it, and it's, it's made a difference, but I think the more we keep talking in the community about what we're trying to do, and how we can support our students making better choices, you know, the better it is for our kids, 'cause they, I think they need our help.
I really would, sorry, I'd really like to encourage everyone to promote having parents and students reach out and letting us know about things. I tell parents all the time, we can't fix the situation if we don't know it exists. You know, Friday afternoon last week, I got a call from a parent, there's some bullying going on on the school bus. Yesterday morning at 6:40, I was at that bus stop, and we rode the bus to school together. It was a really good way to address the issue.
The other thing that we've done, we've, you know, we do tell our parents, because we are a one-to-one school, we tell them to check those iPads at night with the students, and I got a call too last week from a parent who said, every night I check the iPad, and they found some streams of really inappropriate things that happened, and she said, I just couldn't leave for work today before I called and told you this, so you could check with the kids. So we did some checking with each of the students that were in that line of communication, and gave them some other choices that they could make that would be better. So it helps when parents are working with us, it really does.
Just from the school board perspective, if you have any suggestions for how we might modify our policies to help support you more, we would certainly be willing to consider that, and would welcome that kind of input, because, you know, you're, you're in the trenches all the time, and we're kind of sitting here, so we're really dependent on you to give us that information, so we can help to support you via our, our school board policies.
Thank you.
So kind of along the lines where we do a great job educating the students, do we as a district do anything to educate the parents?
I could speak for Jay, we haven't done a lot, we've had just a couple nights where parents could come in, and they're not highly attended. One of the pieces that Mayo has let me know is that they can do a parent piece, so I'm not really up on what that is yet, 'cause we're just, I inquired if they did this, and got a response that yes, they'd be willing to come, and that's where we are in the process. But I think that is really important, that we do something, 'cause I know, I use technology all the time, but I wouldn't say I was really good at it, and if I wanna find something on the internet, my son can find all kinds of things that I can't. Kids are more sophisticated about some of that than we are, and the apps change so fast. Being a parent and trying to keep up with that, I think, is really hard for our parents.
And that is actually my second question, especially from a technology point, you're right, there's so many parents who just aren't comfortable with the technology, so it's great that the one parent from Willow is comfortable enough, but that's probably more of a need, is perhaps an opportunity where we as a district could reach out to other community members to help educate the parents in this space.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Three point oh two, above and beyond, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, we're just getting the school year started, so we don't have a lot of nominees or recommendations yet, just had two so far, so I'm gonna share both of those with you. The first one is Carolyn Friendzone, she's from Riverside Elementary School, and here's what was sent in. Carolyn is a lifelong learner committed to educating first grade newcomer children. She has an inviting personality and thrives on helping both students and staff with any questions or assistance they might have or need. She seems to have a bottomless wealth of energy, both inside and outside the classroom. Almost daily, she organizes volunteers to assist the children in her classroom. She is constantly trying new techniques, the latest research, and employs best practices in her classroom. I saw the students bloom from her exceptional teaching techniques, creativity, and unbelievable organizational skills. Despite staying at school long past the end of the day, she finds time for other passion, namely biking. She has ridden the day across Minnesota numerous times. This is a 248 mile, 24-hour bike ride on gravel. I believe she is, is going to tackle the mountains of France and Italy next summer. Move over, Wonder Woman, you have been replaced. And the other one is Chad King from Kellogg Middle School. In the service of students with special needs, Chad truly embodies education for all. His tireless commitment to ensuring all students are learning at high levels is evident every day that he is at school. Students see this, see this in him, as well as his colleagues, it's a privilege to work with him. So congratulations to our two.
Thank you. Three point oh three, 2017-2018, School Board Committee Assignments Update, Board Members. Does anyone, Mr. Schlusner?
Just not as much of a committee assignment update as much as it is to, again, put a shout out to the Public School Foundation and their Booth Fest event coming up on Saturday, October 20th at Century High School. Again, it's a great event to help support the students and staff with grants for the public schools, so if you get a chance to get out to Century for Booth Fest on the 20th, between 10:00 AM and 3:00 PM, great event for K through eighth grade students.
Any others? Ms. Seelinger?
I attended the first family engagement meeting of the year last week. Good to be back with the people who are attending that, and working with parents in our district, and kind of getting an update. Nothing major to share, just that we've met, and as usual, looking forward to seeing what all the buildings are doing this year.
Consent Agenda, this is an action item. Are there any items School Board members would like removed for a separate consideration? With approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Safe and welcoming learning environment, Riverside Central Elementary DNR School Forest designation, this is an information item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time I'll call Matt Ruzick, Riverside Central Elementary Principal, and Ms. Diana Gleason, who's a volunteer, and maybe others would be joining him.
Lita Casper.
Okay. Community Schools Coordinator.
Thank you all for having us tonight. Donna is here, and Lita, and we're sharing an exciting opportunity, this is the information portion, and really Donna has done the vast majority of the legwork, so I'm just here to support them, and it really gives me, any opportunity I get to recognize Donna and her efforts, as well as her children, who have single-handedly sparked innovation, creativity, giving we want and aspire for our kids to do things that she is doing with her daughter, so it's just an honor to sit next to her and have her share some good news with you all. So I'll pass it to you, ladies.
Well, I can, I'll get started. So a school forest is, is an outdoor classroom where teachers and students explore the natural world as a means to reach core subjects such as math, reading, science, writing, geography, physical education, the arts, and others. So the goal behind this is that we'd be working in partnership with the Department of Natural Resources to create a space within our current space that promotes more natural growth with, in partnership with the DNR. This space doesn't change necessarily unless we want it to change. So the DNR provides professional development for our staff to get our kids outside, to teach them how to engage students more effectively outside. There's no cost, like I said, it's a huge benefit to kids, it's a huge benefit to our staff, and it's a benefit to our property. And we're not giving any property away, there's nothing particularly legally binding about it, it's really just a designation.
Do you wanna say anything else?
It also, the DNR, the School Forester, will come and draw up a management plan for the property, and through that management plan, you can apply for grants, and the Conservation Corps of Minnesota will come, and totally free, and come and work with your students, and through the plan, for instance, if you wanted to make it an outdoor classroom, they will help you build an outdoor classroom, and there are grants that you can apply for for that. And they do everything with the kids, it's not like they come in and they create it all by themselves, it's, you know, and they want the community to be involved in it, and everybody come together and do the plan, and they want the children involved.
So this is more of the informational time, time just to share with you all, and Donna and Lita have worked really hard to work with city and county and facilities and grounds here with the school district, and acquiring documents and all of those things, so we're still looking at land, and how it's designated near our site and around our site, and so then the next steps would be to submit this, and that then would be a return to, to seek approval from, from the board, and so on and so forth. But we wanted to just get on the agenda tonight, so that you could all be aware of it. The DNR already is one of our partners, we're, again, extremely proud and privileged to be called a full-service community school, and the DNR has been one of our centerpiece partnerships this year. We just celebrated Bear Creek Day, and what a success it was, and saw some of you that visited, which we're so grateful for, and they, the nice part with the connection with the DNR is that it's a state-run organization, and they affix many of their targets with state standards, and their partnership is far beyond just a friendly visit or an explosion type of event where you say like, boom, this is one big fun day, but it's a sustainable program where they're going to be infusing learning with kids, so.
And this is actually about over 60 years old, this program has been around for a while, there are schools in the area in the state of Minnesota, there aren't very many in this area, there are actually, I believe, under eight schools that have this particular designation, but it is supported, and their angle, their, their whole angle is that they believe that in connecting students to the natural world around them, while building each student's self-esteem, sense of community, skill level, and knowledge base, and I think Donna really capitalized on that, as she was just talking about, the community effort, yes, we could just go buy, and we could go out and buy an outdoor classroom, we could do that. We don't wanna do that, we wanna use our, we use what we are currently building as a community school to create it together, to build this together with our community, with our students, with our families, because we think that it will be a great place to learn, and a great place to, to go, and I just think about even, as Matt mentioned, Bear Creek Celebration, you know, the mental health piece of it, right? We're all happier when we're outdoors, when we're learning outdoors, so.
That's it.
Thank you.
Question?
Well, I'd just like to make a couple comments. I, I really enjoyed my time out there last week, aside from the fact that it was like we were about ready to freeze to death, if you could've had this weather, instead, that would've been better.
We tried.
But it was just so wonderful to see the high school students who were there, and the kids were learning about fish, and there was a presentation from the DNR that you, Stones and Rivers, and how the pollution actually seeps into the ground, and there were some really cool 24-foot-long canoes there as well, and the kids seemed to be having a really, really, really good time. So you're getting quite a few feathers in your hat over there, you're a community school, you're a turnaround art school, and now you're looking for this, and I think it's just great for kids, so thank you so much for sharing this with us.
Thank you.
And an additional comment, I'm excited, I, as you continue through your steps, I look forward to your return, and maybe even hearing from a student, or parents who have participated, especially the, the learning component you spoke of, and that is important to realize that we can learn beyond and outside the limitation of the classroom, and perhaps through this program, we'll see the results, not that it's only measurable through a, a test, but through the development of the, the children.
Project Learning Tree, I don't know if anybody's familiar with Project Learning Tree, but they have 96 different programs that's based on the Minnesota curriculum, for the kids to go outside and do exactly what they would learn in the classroom, except have a lot of fun doing it, and not even realizing that they're doing math, they're, they're doing science, and that's the whole goal, is to get kids to enjoy learning, and to get outside, and have a classroom outside, and, and there's so much literature to support an outdoor classroom. And, and what's wonderful is when you call the DNR, they are so excited to talk to you, they want so much to help you, and there's just a lot out there, so.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, and thank you, and I know where your daughter got all her, her passion, I don't know if the board members, the student that did the library for LC and the juvenile court system, and this is her daughter, so.
Well, we just received another grant because of Kristi, and she's a successful college freshman, but she's still working right alongside us, so she's forever an otter no one else can have her, so. Thank you all very, very much.
Efficient and Effective Operations, seven point oh one, approval of Longfellow 4515 District Wide Option/Neighborhood School, this is a briefing item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, at this time I'm gonna call Chris Davidson, Longfellow Principal, and Lester Backus, fifth grade teacher, and just by the way, happens to be a UNL, University of Nebraska alum, so glad to see him here tonight. But if, for those of you who may not remember, when Longfellow started, it started out as a neighborhood slash, at that time, choice school, and then it transitioned into just a district-wide choice school, and now we're getting requests from staff that they would like to go back to neighborhood slash district-wide option school, so I'll turn it over to you, Chris.
Chair Workman, Superintendent Munoz, School Board, thanks for having us here. My name's Chris Davidson, I'm the principal over at Longfellow, been there this is my seventh year, and can you introduce yourself?
I'm Lester Backus, fifth grade teacher, and I have been at Longfellow for 19 years.
I'll give it a second here. So, one of the things that we have been working on, and we've been to the board a lot over the last several years, we were kind of the one-to-one pilot proposal that we came with back, I think it was in April of 2012, we started that, and come a long way, became an apple-distinguished school through that program, have had a lot of successes, and we've really learned to keep things simple, 'cause the pelvis sees eyes form a complexity, and that's the way we wanna try to keep things, so we're gonna try to simplify things the best that we can tonight, but we have a proposal that our staff really believes in, it's something our leadership team has really tackled and wrestled with for the last several, four or five years. It's 100% commitment from our staff, they're behind it completely, we even, at our last staff meeting before break, make sure everybody's still on board, we're 100% committed to doing this. And it kind of came from the notion too, that if you're at Longfellow in the mornings, and you look out your windows, and you see several, several buses of kids leaving every single day- day, going away from your school, saying, that's a school over there, we want them to say, that's my school. That's one of our goals. But we also love the families that we currently have too. So it's important that we do this in the best manner possible because we have a wonderful family system going on at Longfellow right now. We just want to be able to embrace more of our families around us as well. So that leads us to our presentation here. So right now, what we're requesting is if we could move from just a district-wide option school to neighborhood and district-wide option. And like Mr. Munoz had shared too, that this is not new. We were a neighborhood school, neighborhood and district-wide option school for about 14 years prior to 2009 and 10, when Gibbs opened up and they redistricted and rebounded, making Longfellow 100% district-wide option. So 2009 and 10, nine years ago, this is our ninth year, we've seen a lot of transition, a lot of change, and it's really impacted our community, we believe, around us as well, that we want to make sure that we can give a voice to that here.
So we just wanted to give you a brief history of our enrollment. Going back to 1995, the first year we became a 4515 school, we had 214 students. And we've watched that enrollment steadily increase throughout the years. The year before, we went to all choice, which was the 2008, 2009 school year, we had 264 students at Longfellow. And today, we sit at 332 students as a 100% choice school. The next slide just shows kind of a visual of the increase since 2008.
And what was interesting during the research behind this too, back in 1995, 96, the reason why we became 4515 was better to serve the community around us. Economically disadvantaged, there was an influx of refugees as well, that we really felt like having a year-round community type of school would really benefit our students. And that was at 214 students at that time. As it's grown throughout time, we changed a lot to where we are today. The next slide will show you what we're looking at for proposing. This here is a map, and you'll see kind of a dark red outline, and I'm really colorblind, so go with me on this. You'll see the circle red right there, that's Longfellow Elementary. That area there is our walking boundary, so it's our non-busing boundary. And currently, within that boundary, there's 388 K5 students, right there within our own boundaries. What's unique about that too is less than 7%, 6.9%, 27 students actually go to Longfellow that live within our community right around us. And that's something that we want to try to impact and give more of a voice to our community around us. This has been a steady decrease. For instance, just a few years ago, we're down about 4% from that. We pulled off our data, and I will say, I will tip my hat to Mr. Cappers in Transportation and Melissa Gatch in Records and Registration. They've really provided a lot of information and really dug deep and helped me along with this as well. That's, that's a huge change for us. And when you look at the number of schools that, that all of our students go to, there's Pinewood, there's Riverside Central, there's Bamber Valley, Rochester Math and Science Academy, RCL Les, there's homeschool, there's a lot of families around us. And they're happy. I think many of them would like to come to Longfellow as well because over the years, myself and Marta Milan, one of our bilingual specialists here from the district, have gone door-to-door every December too with the applications for Longfellow to provide opportunities for our families to come in. And that's a difficult discussion to have when you do the district-wide option lottery. And, you know, the principal from the school came across the street, met with me in my living room, then I don't, don't go to the school still. So it's something that we, we feel is really important that we address. What's yours?
For our current student demographics and past as well, prior to becoming 100% choice, and I, we don't have the exact number for this, but when I was there, I remember our minority and our free and reduced population was around the mid-70%, 75, 76% for both free and reduced lunch and our minority population. And over the years, we have seen that steadily decrease to where it is now at 36% minority population. And as Chris said, the reason we went to 4515 was to service the students of our community with those needs on the free and reduced. There's a special set of needs that go along with that. The long summers are very detrimental to students in that situation because they just don't have opportunities that other students get. And on the 4515 calendar, we were able to provide a lot of opportunities for those students. I came to Longfellow as an AmeriCorps member, before it became the Reading Corps. I was free to do a lot of different things that, that don't quite fit into the Reading Corps program as it is now. Over the breaks, I came in and I did tutoring every day of the break with some students who wouldn't otherwise pick up a book. We worked, we had two of us there with the AmeriCorps, and we worked with those students every day for six hours a day. And then the shorter summers, we just felt were so beneficial for that population. And this is one of the reasons that we are really wanting to get back into our community more and involve those students in those opportunities. And there again is just a visual graph of our populations as they've decreased over the years.
So currently, we draw from all four quadrants of the city. And just in the last seven years, we've gone from about four to five buses in the afternoon to seven buses in the afternoon. And we're doing transfers for the first time ever as well, as we're kind of all over the city, which is great. And we really appreciate that because we're growing, you know, and you saw the numbers earlier, we're the biggest we've ever been right now. There's a demand for it, which we feel is great as well. We just really want to make sure that we provide that same opportunity for the kids around us. That's very, very important to us, and I think you've heard that multiple times from us here. You'll see the big shift. There is a stark contrast from where we were, serving economically disadvantaged students in the past to where we are now. And we want to make sure that we can provide that year-round education to our kids directly around us. And again, there's some more representations of where we've gone over time, the shift in that. I love data, I love to show data, so this is where this is coming from. But it's important that you understand the facts and be an objective about it too, of what's changed over time with this. The, the cool thing with this too is we, we still are a school-wide Title I building. We still qualify for the programming. Some of our programming is gone. We used to qualify for the 21st Century Community Learning Grant. We no longer qualify for that, so that's affected some of our programming. But having the opportunity to be a one-to-one school and a pilot program and do our work with Apple has been foundational to where we are today. I think we are doing some really cool things. We've learned how to harness that, and we're impacting a lot of our kids, and we just want to be, unpack more around us as well. And there you'll see our shift over time from our free and reduced price lunch as well, what that looks like. One of the big things we didn't want to do is, is come up here and just kind of toot our horn, if you will, about some gains that we've made, but we really feel like we have programming in place to support our kids that need us as well, so.
So the, the calendar and some specific training that our staff took really seemed to be showing results when in 2011, our school was recognized as a Minnesota's Future Award winner, which recognized two schools in the state for strength in closing the achievement gap. And we felt like, not only our calendar, but the, the training that we took to help the, the free and reduced students and minority populations, we felt like that training had a lot to do with, with receiving that award and the growth that the students showed. And so again, this just kind of shows a little bit of our, our passion to get back into our community and, and service the students that live around us.
And this is another award. This comes from an advocacy group called MNCAN. And MNCAN is actually a chapter of 50CAN, which is an advocacy group nationally that works on equity and making sure all students get everything they possibly can to be successful in school. And these are where they take rankings based upon MCA data. And you'll see that where we land with students of color, and this was in 2013 as well, and we're proud of those results. And I also say there's some other Long, or Rochester Public Schools that land on these results. Sunset Terrace was some, at least Century was in there for some as well. So you can look at those, the website for that also. It's a, it's a pretty good honor to have as well. But it's also a result of the hard work. And I will say, one of the things that affects it as well is we don't have staff turnover. Staff are committed there. And there are a lot of staff that have been there, and Lester, I don't remember how long you've been here, but it's been a while.
19 years.
19 years. There's a commitment when you walk through the doors, there's a commitment to the community around us as well as the families that we have. And we, again, we want to see what we can do to help our community directly around us. So here's our planned proposal. We try to keep it simple. We do not want to alienate any of our families that we currently have. We are committed to them, and that's not going to change. We would like to open up an opportunity to have more of our community around us attend Longfellow. So what we're proposing is that we provide a neighborhood preference first, beginning with our 2018, 19 school year kindergarten-only students. Right now, around Longfellow, there's 83 students that are eligible for kindergarten next year, just within our walking boundaries. We have 37 siblings already on, on point to be at Longfellow next year in kindergarten, which would leave us about 21 spots. We typically stay right at 58 because we go down to two sections of, of second grade in two years, which puts them at 29 and 29, which is the district target. So there's, there's a small window there, but it is a beginning for us to be able to get back into our community. And I just gave you a lot of that information right there. Sorry, I jumped way ahead. So communication with this would be very crucial. We've, like I said, we have 100% buy-in from our, our Longfellow staff, they're behind it. We would need to come up with our communication plan with our bilingual specialists, make sure that we get native languages and all of our families to understand where we're at and what we're able to provide for them, and provide that neighborhood option first for our families around us. And then any other spots that would open would still stay district-wide spots, beginning with kindergarten for next year.
Chris, just want to clarify, they would still do sibling preference first.
Yes, yes.
Then whatever spots were open would be neighborhood.
Correct.
And then whatever spots are open after that would be district-wide lottery.
So our T-shirts could very easily look like Longfellow Neighborhood District-Wide Option School. That would be a tough one. Sorry. Cool. Be a wraparound. Yeah. But it's a step, and we wanted to start small and bring the proposal to you. I know we, we brought it to our cabinet and they graciously provided us this time to come and speak with you guys about it. So we're open to questions.
Board members? Mr. Schlussner?
Facilities, as, you know, one of my committee assignments is looking at facilities. Has the district had a chance to see what this would look like when the Pundwood students are, or when your students are in your school and the schools around there are at different capacities and boundaries and?
Well, like I said, there would only be about 21 students for next year in kindergarten. And then if we have siblings and spaces and if there are grade levels, they would get the preference too as well. I don't think it would be that big of an impact because I don't also want to take away from my sister's schools either. And some families will, a lot of families say, hey, I love it here, I love it here, I'm staying here. Great, you know, we're providing better options for, or more options for our, our community around us. Right now, all of, we're pretty full, you know. 14 years ago, 15 years, it could be at 214 to 332. And we're up about, about 65 students since I was able to start there seven years ago, so.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of the schools are really full.
Yep, yep.
Mr. Barlow?
Thank you. Excellent presentation, a lot of information, good information. And so though, it seems like you may still potentially have the buses pulling in front of the school and seeing those kids taken to other schools. So that really doesn't address that concern, though that may have simply created the awareness directed back towards the community, and I think it's very important. The communication piece in terms of transition that you referenced, I believe, also is a very key step. And I, I'm excited to see the results. I am curious on one point though. Statistically, the data, Longfellow has been successful, continues to be. Aside from the commitment of the staff, and, and you're a good example, 19 years, I applaud you for that. Are there transferable things that Longfellow may be doing that we can perhaps pass on to other schools? I mean, obviously, there's a passion. There's programming, obviously, inside-out, that's still active there, isn't it?
No.
Oh.
Nope.
Okay.
That was, I bit off a lot to chew with our staff my first few years there, and that was going on at the same time we were trying to implement our one-to-one programs. So we kept our focus on our one-to-one, and that's what we've grown into today.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
And, but the point, I'd like to see success replicated when possible. And when you meet with other professionals, principals, teachers, are you guys able to share ideas, thoughts?
Absolutely.
And how successful are you being there in terms of other, others learning, gleaming from Longfellow?
Well, I've shared this in the past when I've been at board meetings, and I'll start here.
Go ahead.
Sure you'll want to share too. But having taught out of state at other places in my career and being in Rochester for 14 years, this is a highly collaborative district. And I have an opportunity, we have monthly leadership meetings, we have a huge network of administrators that we talk all the time and we share everything. And that's one of the best things in education is you beg, borrow and you steal, you do whatever you have to do. And I get the honor to work with a lot of colleagues that share everything. And we do, we share all of our ideas and, you know, sitting here listening to DNR, I'm sitting back there going, all right, that's one of our next things, maybe we can become a community school now too. And that's something I have to be cautious of too, is always bringing in too much. I like to just go, go, go. So I know my faults, there are many. But we do have a wonderful opportunity to share. We've been able to lead and do a lot of things with our whole district with our one-to-one programming. But I will say our leadership meetings and the opportunities that I get to have with my own colleagues and personal phone calls and sharing with them and doing things with them, it's great. I mean, we kind of look at Longfellow and all the schools in the district like this. We might be different names in different places, we're all just building and supporting Rochester Public Schools' kids. It just happens to be where that location, so that's kind of how we work through things.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, you know, I've been fortunate enough to work in this district for a very long time. And every time I go to a professional development and talk with my colleagues, I'm just impressed by the, the knowledge and the professionalism that exists in this district. And we continually learn from each other. So yeah, as we meet, we'll talk about what's going on at each other's school, and we pick up little bits here and there from each other certainly, yeah.
I think a prime example of that is our, our district's activity we just recently had. I think we had over 70, 80 different offerings for people all over the district to go to, to self-select. And those were all led by teachers and administrators. I mean, just because it's the right thing to do, there's a lot of professional knowledge in this district.
Mr. Munoz, you had? Ms. Becker?
So where are you hoping to take this? So I know this, this in 18 or 17, 18, is that an extra 18, 19?
Yeah.
All right, sorry. You're just talking about kindergarten. So like in six years, you're hoping to be just a total neighborhood school again? Or, I mean, where are you?
I think we'll always be neighborhood and district-wide option because that's what we were before, because you can't force people on the calendar either, but you provide them the opportunity.
Okay.
So we just provide a preference for it.
So you're thinking maybe it'll be, was it like half and half? Or is it?
It was probably 70, 30.
Do you have like a, a target that you?
We're not necessarily looking for a target. And one, one of the things too that affected us changing besides the boundaries is we are racially isolated school as well. And if you look at the percentages of where we were as a district 10 years ago, minority population-wise, we were, we were at 65, 70% a few years before that, where the district was 25 to 29%. We were considerably racially isolated, and that was from legislation back in 1999 to 2000. Well, right now, you see there's a huge shift, and if we go back to just 56% right now, we're still not isolated. So I think we, we right now really mirror what the district looks like. We just.
Well, that's, well, yeah, because in your, one of your slides, I mean, the one that looked at the, at the demographics, it was, well, everything's pretty much evened out.
Yeah, yeah. We typically, what I, what I was saying before is we were about 70, 30, 70% neighborhood. And we have been able to get a lot more of our neighborhood by going door-to-door like we've been doing for the last several years. There have been several that have been able to come over. And now you see grandmas coming over, grandpas, aunties, uncles, everybody's coming in, they hang out, they hang on the peninsula. There's a huge community feel, and that's important to us. It really is. And, you know, we have a new family that's with us that, you know, mom went to school there 25 years ago. And it's really something nice for her to come over as well.
Yeah, just a couple of things. You know, I often get asked this question about Longfellow, is it, is it the 4515 that gets the results they get? And I say, yes, but. Is it the one-to-one? Yes, but. Really, I think what the real reason is, the staff are committed, and they have a "whatever-it-takes" mentality. They'll do whatever it takes. If I have to work a little extra, be on a contract, whatever it takes. And, Don, you were asking, you know, can we, some things you just can't replicate. I mean, having a building where everybody's a hundred percent committed to every student is something that's very difficult to replicate. And then the other piece, and research will support this, that what we're finding in our district-wide option schools, parents are more committed to the school because they chose to go to that school. And I think those two things are a little difficult to replicate, but I really believe it's the staff that are committed to the students in that building that really contributes to the results they get. And I think when Chris brought this idea to me, and actually, he's been talking to me about it for a couple of years now, and I really agree with what they want to do, and I think it's the right thing to do. But I do want to, just want to bring you aware that, you know, I always try to think, what are, what could be the negatives of doing this, and really, the, I only can think of two. And one is, if I'm that parent who isn't in the neighborhood, I see my lottery chances shrinking a little bit. And then the other issue we may have is the next district-wide option school coming to you and say, "Hey, we want to be a neighborhood slash..." And I'm not saying it's a bad thing that we do that or not, but that's something that could come up. But my response to that is, Longfellow started out as a neighborhood-slash-district-wide-option school. They're just going back to where they were. And I think the racially-isolation really had a lot, I mean, I know that's why we use, used to pay transportation out of integration, because we were trying to bring more white students into the school to get that balanced out a little bit. So, I really don't see any reason why we shouldn't do this, but I just wanted to call to your attention that those are a couple of things that we may hear, but I don't think it's enough to keep us from wanting to move forward. And I personally want to support the staff. This is something that they're passionate about, and how can you argue wanting to serve your neighborhood? It's really difficult to do that. But I'm very supportive of their recommendation, but I just felt it was important to bring up those two things that could possibly, because when Chris and I talked, I said, "Well, let's talk, what could be negative about this?" And those are really the only two things that we could come up with.
I've been kind of letting everybody else talk first, so I'll jump in. I have a whole slew of questions, and I apologize for not getting them to you in advance, so believe me, it's certainly not a gotcha moment. But you mentioned a couple of things, I'll start with maybe the easier stuff, that there's been a steady increase in enrollment in the twenty-two years, but there's also been a very steady increase in the district overall. So, I was just wondering, and I'm not expecting you to provide this information off the top of your head right now, is what the correlation is between the expansion of the district versus the expansion of Longfellow? So, if the district has increased X percent, has Longfellow also has increased X percent, or X-plus something, or X-minus something, so...
I can answer that.
Okay.
The gentleman right there. I mean, they control their enrollment in the district-wide option school. He just wants to serve so many more kids that he's chosen to take on more kids than he's had to. We haven't gone to him and say, "Hey, our enrollment's going up. We want you to increase your enrollment." It's just that, that's just, that's what he is.
No, that's not what I was suggesting at all, but that, because there are more students in the district, they would, there are more students to have the opportunity than to attend Longfellow. So, you're at three-hundred-and-thirty-two now, is that capacity, overcapacity, just appropriate?
We're right at capacity, yeah, we're pretty much at targets everywhere.
Okay. And then, I'll let a couple other people jump in before I continue with my questions. So, Mr. Schlussner, go ahead.
I'll wait till you're done.
What?
I'll wait till you're done.
No, no, you really should, because I've got a lot of questions. I don't want to be hogging all the time.
That's fine. So, as we've heard in the past, you know, from a community point of view, I mean, from your proposal point of view, I'm very supportive of your proposal here, but I know, I've listened to people throughout our community, there is a desire in this town for forty-five, fifteen schedule. Of course, there's strong opposition to some of that as well. But I'm left wondering, from a district point of view, does that mean that we should consider another school for that schedule or not? I think, you know, this is, you know, where we need to talk to our community, and it's part of our communications, is you're going back to a neighborhood school, that choice, for the most part, has gone away. You'd mentioned it's a seventy, thirty percent split. So, that's, you know, for the most part, from a district point of view, an option going away. And we've heard fairly loud and clear, you know, not only is there support for it, there is requests in the last year for expansion of it to the middle school. And this is almost going in the other direction in a certain sense. So, it's not necessarily a question so much for yourself there. It's more for us as a board of, where do we go from here with our district, our community, and desire for the schedule in a school?
Right. And that has been in consideration as well, and you're very accurate in your comments with that as well, and I would agree with that, is, yes, we went through a whole year of this, you know, just a year ago, of working on forty-five, fifteen district-wide, and I had to take that and put that to the side and still talk about just the community within and around us that we needed to advocate for. Is it a step backwards, a step forwards? I don't know either one of those. I think there's a demand for it, yes. There was also strong opposition that we heard, and sometimes, you know, it was, it is what it is. And, you know, Lester and I had lots of talk about this as well, and we just want to make sure we just keep the focus directly on our neighborhood right around us. And there's a lot of politicizing that can go with that whole district-wide stuff and provide another one. I sat through many of those as well. We just want to do right with the kids right around us, as well as the ones we already have.
Right. And again, I think from your point of view, that makes complete sense. It's more of a question for us as a board of something that we need to think about and talk about.
And historically, it was around seventy, thirty. It's really hard to predict what it's going to be. You know, in the past, we would, letters would be sent out to the neighborhood families saying, "This is your school unless you opt out." So, it's really hard to predict how many families at this point would opt out as compared to before, after, you know, we've been one-hundred percent choice for how many years now, so...
Agreed, but if you just look at the numbers today, it's a hundred percent choice, and it will be definitely less than that.
Yeah.
And one last question along that line is, of the percentages of students or families that apply to go there, how many of those actually get in? Do you have, like, say your capacity is six-hundred, do you have a thousand apply to get in?
Last year, we had two-hundred-and-twenty-eight applications. We had a hundred-and-forty-one in kindergarten alone, but we had twenty-six siblings already in.
So, you're getting in about half of the people applied. So, to me, that's, again, that's the indicator of the kind of demand in this community for this program.
Yeah, and I had a lot more data for you, but we converted to Central Office doing all of our lotteries for us, and, but I was able to get that information, but I just had the last two years' worth of information. So, it's two-hundred-and-fifty-three applications in sixteen, seventeen, and two-hundred-and-twenty-eight this past year. And the majority of that is always in kindergarten. You know, the least amount typically is fifth grade, because it's the last year. But we've actually had more kids coming in fifth grade the last two years than we ever have, coming in for a year, so we're happy about that. That's good.
Ms. Selinger?
Thank you. I have a clarifying question about free and reduced-price lunch. Let's see, and I think I just answered it, because I actually read the whole sentence. So, your students who qualify is thirty-seven, thirty-four-point-seven?
Correct.
Now, do we know that all of those, those who qualify, but we know that that doesn't necessarily mean that thirty-four-point-seven have applied to get free and reduced-price lunch, correct?
Actually, yes, we do know that, because we always run our list from the year prior, and anybody who did not reapply, we make sure, I personally reach out and make sure that we get all of our applications, and we do ask every family at the beginning of every year to file an application, regardless of who you are, what you do. It's just a request that we have because it supports funding for our schools.
Right, okay.
And as of, I think, Ms. Peterson gave me an envelope the other day, and I think I just had one family still in it, and I'd already contacted them, and they had a change in job status, and they no longer qualified.
And then, so then, my second piece is trying to look through here, and you may not know this. Our district free and reduced-price lunch, thirty...
Thirty-six percent. We, as of last week, we had about, I think, nine-hundred families in the district that qualified last year, had not reapplied, and we've asked principals to make contact. I just recorded, last Friday, recorded a Sky Alert that was sent out to all those families that haven't reapplied, to remind them to apply before the deadline. So, it's, yeah, it's, I think it was about nine-hundred last week that we had that still needed to reapply. And some of it is, they just, I think they do it once, and they think that's good for their, you know, while their children are enrolled.
Like our registration.
It's something that has to be done every year.
Okay, thank you.
So, I had a couple more questions. So, your total capacity for kindergarten is fifty-eight, is that correct?
Yeah, we try to keep it at fifty-eight, because we have three sections of K, three sections of first.
Right, okay. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that correctly. But there are eighty-three students who are eligible for kindergarten in the walk boundary. So, even if...
For next year.
For next year. So, even if it were totally a neighborhood school, you still would not be able to take all of those students?
Correct.
Correct, so they would have to go somewhere else.
Correct.
My next question is, of the neighborhood students who applied via the lottery, how many of those did not get in?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't get that information, unfortunately. I just, I know just the families that I go sit in living rooms and the faces that I see come May when we do our kickoff, our Kinder Camp. So, it's few.
Okay. I mean, I think that's an important thing to be able to know, so that if you have a hundred families applying and only three families get in, that's a whole lot different than if only three people or three families applied for the lottery to begin with. So, without knowing that information, it's really hard to gauge whether or not the small percentage of neighborhood families who are at Longfellow, within the walk distance, who are at Longfellow, whether or not those people all participated in the lottery, and perhaps something could have been done differently in making sure that these parents were aware of the lottery? I'm not sure how you would be moving forward with that of what you're currently doing versus, you know, canvassing the neighborhood.
I think being direct and having a policy or a practice within our own district saying, "You have first priority in the lottery for a neighborhood preference," would be key for that. It's very difficult when you sit in a living room and you meet kids, and you sit with families, and you build a relationship and trust, and they fill out a district-wide lottery application, and they don't get it. That's difficult. If we know outright that, hey, this is a lottery first for these twenty spots within our neighborhood here, and we have that availability to us, I think we would fill them. I honestly do. Would I like to take all eighty-three? Yes. But we also have a service to our families we have right now.
Right.
And that's very important to us, because, like I said, we are a relationship-first-type school. That's who we are, that's the culture of our building, and that's got to come first and foremost. But it is, I'll just speak locally and media for myself, it's hard to look out the window and see a lot of kids driving away. It is.
So, sort of in, I mean, and I really appreciate your comments that you made earlier that, you know, Longfellow is just one piece of the Rochester School District. So, as school board members, we have to consider the whole district.
Yep.
So, and I don't expect you to have these numbers either, but I think it's certainly worth considering as to what percentage of students who live in the walk distance of the Lincoln neighborhood or the Washington neighborhood actually gain admittance via the lottery to those buildings? And would we have a similar kind of request from those two schools that, yes, we would like to serve our neighborhood schools first? And, you know, so we, that could either be a good thing or a more difficult challenge. I'm assuming that the students in the Franklin neighborhood who choose Montessori, if they don't get into that Montessori program, then they are still at Franklin. Is that a safe assumption? So, perhaps, Mr. Munoz, you or somebody on your staff could tell me where the Washington neighborhood students go to school if they don't go to Washington, and the same for Lincoln?
Well, I can tell you, I mean, don't happen to know that on top of my head, but I know when we did the boundary work a few years ago and mapped every student, if you look at all the district-wide schools, they had kids from everywhere, all over. I don't know, knowing that percentage should impact our decision on this one. I did mention that they may come back to the board and say, "Hey, you let them be neighborhood-slash-district," and I'm not saying we shouldn't allow that, but we do have, I mean, I could get, we can get you the numbers of that. If you remember, actually, when we were doing the boundary work, there were kids that lived right across the street from Longfellow that we were busing to Bamber Valley, and talked about how it's difficult for their, those parents to get engaged and involved in the school at Bamber Valley when they're so far away. We ended up not making that change. At that time, it was concerned that it would impact Bamber Valley's free and reduced percentages, which would impact their title of school. They're no longer qualified right now as a title of school, so that wouldn't be a factor for them. And I don't know if Washington staff would come back to you and say, "We have the same passion that Longfellow has, and we want to serve our neighborhood," and then I guess we could take that on when it comes. I don't know if that's what happened or not, and Lincoln, the same. I guess that's just, my understanding that these programs, choice schools, started within from staff wanting to do this. So, now the same staff that wanted to do this way back when, when it was neighborhood-slash-district-wide, want to go back to what they were. But I would think if Washington or Lincoln wants to come back and say their staff is committed to being neighborhood-slash-district-wide, then we would have to give them the same consideration at that time.
And I just want to be clear, too, in voice and for on behalf of Longfellow, too, that our intent was not to do anything for Washington or Lincoln or Montessori. Ours is local, just to Longfellow, and we had precedent, you know, of being neighborhood and district-wide option or choice before as well, so...
And I believe that's how Washington first started, too, with the core knowledge curriculum, that the Washington students were first incorporated into it before it became totally choice. That was a lovely answer, but it really, I guess I wasn't clear on my question.
I can get you the numbers, if that's what you need.
No, I don't need numbers. In the slide, it said, "Those not attending Longfellow attend one of the many other schools, such as Pinewood Riverside, Central, Bamber Valley, Franklin, Rochester Math and Science Academy." So, the kids who don't go to, who are in the neighborhood district for Washington, if they do not go to Washington for that experience, what elementary schools do they go to? I don't, I was just, that's, and the same thing for Neighbor, for Lincoln, like, where do those kids end up? And once again, I apologize for not having these questions ahead of...
I wouldn't know that.
You wouldn't know that.
And you wouldn't know that.
I live in my Longfellow world.
And then, just one more, one more follow-up along that. So, this was primarily at the request of the staff, that, but you think that the parents in the neighborhood also have the same concern?
I, just having gone door-to-door and talking to families, they were excited about the opportunity. And like I said, I've done that with Ms. Malone here for years.
Right, right.
But I think, and kind of back to what Mark was saying, it's still going to be a hundred percent choice school. Not everyone that lives in this neighborhood is going to choose to go...
Correct.
...to put in the lottery. They may love it at Bamber and want to stay at Bamber.
And there were homes that we knocked on doors, and they said they loved it there. Good, we're providing you an option.
You're just basically giving a, just like you give siblings a little bit of advantage to get in, now you're going to give neighborhood kids a little bit of advantage to get in, but it's still at their choice. We're not making them go.
Correct, no, and I understand that. Mr. Smith?
I mean, I like this idea of the neighborhood school. I always think if we had a system where the neighborhood schools were the school of choice, that community would be better off. So, I'm just curious, if we did this, and with the policy was, for the district-wide schools, was neighborhood first, and then district, is that something, you know, they're asking us to do that with, in this case, would that be something we want to take a look at district-wide as a district-wide policy, instead of having it, regardless of, you know, still have district-choice schools, but, you know, the policy would be that neighborhoods get first dibs on the neighborhood school, and then, you know, there's a lottery, there's a lottery out. Knowing full well that not every kid who lives in that boundary is going to necessarily be able to attend that school because of capacity, but I just can't help but wonder if we shouldn't be thinking, I mean, I like the idea of what they're doing here, and I'm going to be supportive of that, but I'm wondering if we shouldn't be, this gets back, this gets back to our facility questions, is it be better to have, if this is going to be a policy that just to make that district-wide? It does a couple of things, because if more neighborhood kids are going to school, it should be a correlation to drop in the numbers of kids that we're busing, which means our cost, school, our cost for busing could maybe be positively impacted by doing that. So, I think looking at the policy and the implications of that policy, but not only from, you know, individual school, but district-wide, might make some sense to at least ponder that question and see what kind of answer we might, you know, how we approach getting answers to that question.
You know, just to, I'm sure that the parents of the students in the Longfellow attendance area who didn't get into Longfellow via the lottery are very disappointed. are very disappointed. But I would also venture to say that if there are parents in the Washington neighborhood or the Lincoln neighborhood whose students, whose kids did not get in via the lottery, that those parents would be disappointed as well. So I think, I think the disappointment, you know, is universal when they don't get in.
I can't speak to the other choice schools. I don't know their history. I just, I just know that, you know, our option was based on the needs of the community. And I can't say if Washington was built in the same way or Lincoln. I don't know that. I just know, and that's what we want to do, is keep it, for Chris and I, we can speak to Longfellow. And the fact that our forty-five fifteen calendar came to serve that specific community. And we have the history of being community and choice and, you know, that's what we want to go back to.
Mr. Barlow?
And I appreciate you bringing us back to that point. And so all we're being asked is to consider the proposal before. It's not a district other choice considerations. And I'm full well prepared to consider the Longfellow proposal. And I am confident that it's been well studied. And it further caused me to believe that in dealing with your peers who may certainly be principals and/or teachers at the other choice schools, they're aware of what you guys are planning and this proposal. Out of curiosity, did you hear anything from their points of views on, oh yeah, we're thinking about doing that also? Or not asking you to speak for them, but it seems like we're kind of concerned about what they may be thinking or what they may do. But are you, do you feel any liberty to maybe comment?
Yeah, I've spoken to a few of my colleagues and they support what we're trying to do for our community around us. There wasn't any conversation about their, them and what's going to happen to them. Like I said, I'm very honored to be able to work with the group that I work with that whatever we choose to do and work for to support our kids, everybody's just a hundred percent on board for. So I didn't have any negative feedback as in, hey, does that mean they're going to come after our school? Are we going to do something different? None of that. They were like, hey, good, way to stand up for your kids and your community and do what you can for them. So that's kind of the mindset that was out there.
Thank you.
Ms. Seelinger?
So, I've been around a long time. So I was around when we made this change. And I feel like, and you presented the reasons well, you know, the racially isolated school district and things like that. And at the time, I feel like part of the other thing was that to make every, all of our options the same. And so there's a little bit of me that's like, ooh, now we're doing a hybrid. Although, one thing I do appreciate about our district is that our schools are so unique, no matter if they're an option school or a not. And I think that's a really, that's to our benefit. But I kind of, I hooked onto something you said about the number of students or the number of kindergarteners in your non-busing boundary. Because it's not really a walk boundary because you really don't have a boundary. And you said there was-
For next year?
Yeah.
Eighty-three?
Eighty-three kindergarteners. So my brain is going to, what if you were a neighborhood school? What if you were just a Falwell or a Pinewood or whatever with an actual boundary? What would happen?
We'd add on. Make it K eight. No, I don't know what we would happen.
That doesn't help the number.
Right.
You're going off the one point, whatever the walking boundary of-
Yep.
For, yep, okay.
And the boundary's impacted too of the streets are crossable, things like that. Sidewalks are accessible, things like that impacted that as well. And again, I'll tip my hat to Mr. Cappers for helping me through all that process. But, you know, some of it was, there was decreasing enrollment back in the early nineties too, which affected some of this as well. Two-hundred-and-fourteen kids in the building compared to three-hundred-and-thirty-two is, you know, just in seven years since we've been there, you know, thirty, or sixty-eight kids, that's over two full classrooms full of students. And, you know, we're full everywhere. We're used, maximizing every room. That's an interesting question. I don't know what we would do, to be honest. And I've never even thought of it in that context.
Well, just thinking of, you know, a Churchill Hoover, if we had eighty, we'd have four sections of kindergarten.
We don't have the space. We don't have their room.
So can I push you to say, what if you just went to be a neighborhood forty-five fifteen school and you figured it out and families opted out if they're in your boundary?
Well, first thing to that is I don't want to alienate any of my families that we currently have.
Right.
Because they're our family.
Right.
And that's a very important thing to me. In six years through a transition, if we become neighborhood again, we would have to work through that. That's just what we'd have to do. Do we have the space to be able to do it? If it's still three-hundred-and-eighty-eight, four-hundred kids, no, I don't think we would. We don't have any open classrooms right now, anywhere. So I don't know exactly what we would do in that part.
Mr. Smith?
This is precisely why I think, if we could look at this question, we need to be looking at it district-wide. The implications district-wide. I'm not, you know, trying, because I support what you're trying to do here. But I don't think we can make an isolated, you know, well, we can, obviously. I'm just not sure it'd be the right, right thing to do without asking the systematic impacts that this has and how this stuff trickles out to those schools. Because your point, Sherwood, when I think there are other, that live in other boundaries. I'd like to opt into that neighborhood school and do that if I could get in the neighborhood. Because I think parents are, you know, people like, you know, if they can keep kids from getting on a bus and they can walk, it makes everybody's lives easier. So notwithstanding the proposal, which I like what you're doing with it and I think you've researched it well, you know, it's evidenced by how you do it. I'm just not sure how many of our other schools have talked, gone out and talked to the neighborhoods and talked to see if, what kind of interest there might be in that, that district. There's a way we could somehow, you know, get all this assembled so we can. I just think we, I just think we should be looking at this district-wide. Ask the question from a district-wide perspective and then work ourselves back to the individual school. I guess I defer to the administration in terms of how you want to approach that, what you think the most efficient way to address that, that question is. Otherwise, we get into this mode, I think, well, we accommodate this request and somebody else does it. And then we have all these unintended kind of consequences that trickle out that affect transportation costs, affect the lottery, you know, and the families that may be in one school now but not going to be in that school. I just think we have to think it, think it all the way through from a system-wide.
And that's really, that's really where I was going with my other questions, which is obviously not a concern for you because your first and foremost concern is Longfellow, your students, your community. I totally understand that. But as a board, we have to look at the total system.
I respect that.
In that, I hate to bring this up, but a number of years ago, we had, or several years, two years ago, whenever it was, we were having the big discussion. And we had a quite lively discussion as to whether or not students on free and reduced lunch should have preference in the lottery system-wide. And the result of that discussion, it had something to do with statistics, which is not my field by any stretch of the imagination. I won't try and remember what the particulars were. But in terms of statistically, it would end up being the same as if we, you know, gave other people an edge. And then can you really call it a lottery if it's, if you've got all these conditions on it?
I think that was during the boundary discussion, about three years ago. We were looking at all different options.
Okay, so you remember those two, which were interesting times. But, so one of the things I really would like the board to consider, and I will go ahead and put my questions in more readable form and send them to you, Mr. Munoz, and I'll also copy the board on them as well, is that these are some of the things that, moving forward, the board has to consider. Not just your school in isolation. I really applaud everything that you're doing for your community. I think it's absolutely wonderful, you know. And if I were queen of the universe, I would say, yes, make it so. And, you know, we'd have, everybody would be happy everywhere. But I do think we have an obligation to look at, at the system-wide effect. And if there are other board members who, you know, think we don't, then, then we don't. But, you know, I like the concept. I like the concept. The devil's in the details. Mr. Barlow?
Oftentimes, I hear the reminder that we're a governance board, not a management. And the superintendent earlier commented that, and I don't want to perhaps misquote him, but Superintendent Munoz, could you perhaps restate your position regarding this proposal?
Yeah, I support it. I understand the concern about how it's going to impact the system. But this conversation that Chris and I had didn't just pop up a month ago. It's been at least two, if not three, years that he's approached me and wanted to talk to me about this idea. I've not had any other staff or any other school approach me and say, hey, we would like to go neighborhood. And like I said, I'm just going on what I was told when I came here seven years ago, that these started up internally. And that's how we got district, or choice schools at the time. So the same people are coming back saying, we'd like to do, we'd like to serve our neighborhood more. I guess I'm, I'm, don't think we could ever make a full-fledged just neighborhood school. I just, because, well, we have, we know we have some people in our community don't, just don't like that calendar. So it would have to remain a choice or district-wide option school for those families who just don't want to have that type of calendar because it impacts them. So I think it would always have to maintain some part of a choice. You know, I just haven't had any other principal, any other staff come to me and say, hey, we'd like to do our district-wide option a little bit different. And Chris has been talking to me for two, maybe three years about doing this. And I finally just said, all right, I like your plan. Let's bring it to the board and see what they think. I can support the plan. As far as, you know, you're not going to, you know, we're not going to get every eighty, whatever, eighty-something you said can't get in. And I'm, I'm not sure if all eighty would want to get in. I think some of them like where they're at, where their siblings are, and they will keep them there. But I do know, and Chris is the only one that I'm aware of. And I'm not saying other principals aren't doing this. They may be doing it and just not making me aware of it. But he's the only one I'm aware of, of our choice district-wide option schools that are going out to talking to families in their neighborhood about encouraging them to apply. They may be doing it. I'm just not aware of it. But I know this is, he's been doing this for a couple of years to try to get more of those kids at least to apply. But when you, he does that and then they don't get picked, it really, it looks really bad. And not that that should be a factor, but, you know, he's come and talked to me and I didn't get in? Well, I'm not going to apply next year because, you know, he talked to me and I thought I was in, but I didn't get in. So, but he's the only one, that school's the only one I'm aware of that has expressed any interest in changing their current status as far as a district-wide school. There could be others. They just haven't approached me about it, but Chris has. I think it's, like Lester said, I mean, this whole program started to serve a certain population in that community. And if you look at his numbers, we're not serving a lot of that population. And the research will, will show you that the kids that get the most out of this type of calendar are those kids that he's talking about. And he's got a lot of them living right across the street and just north of his building.
I guess, as I thought about that a little bit more, if there's more neighborhood kids going to school, that intuitively means there'll be less busing.
Oh, yeah.
So that's, that'll save some money.
And I want to reiterate just again that this is nothing about the families that we serve right now.
Oh, I get that.
I just, I don't want that message to come across that, you know, as the families we're serving now.
I know. We're the ones that have to deliver that message.
No, and, well, I, you know, there'll be conversations like that. And we have a family-first organization, just like RPS does. But we are really focused on our families at Longfellow. And I don't want our families to feel like, whoa, you don't want us there. It's one, that's not it at all. It's just, we could be doing a little bit better still. I think that's our primary goal.
Ms. Becker?
Well, I mean, you know, we've been talking about the families in the neighborhood, but there was something that you said, Mr. Smith. But I mean, we have to remember also the families that are choosing to go to the district-wide school. So for whatever reason, they, they are choosing not, they, for whatever reason, they don't want to go to their neighborhood school. So I mean, for as many people as, you know, you might want to go, but there's, you know, all the people who want to go to Washington or Lincoln or to Longfellow, I mean, they all want to go to those specific. And they will say, I will put my kid on, I will put my child on a bus. And, and, you know, so we, I mean, I think it's-
But if we're not, if we're not giving the neighborhood the first choice at that, then we are, by making that decision, we are automatically increasing our costs of transporting students. If one of the objectives is to decrease, you know, is hold, you know, cost and giving neighborhood preference for schools, we're letting people still opt out and have them still the choice. You know, this could be an efficient, an efficient way. If there's a significant number of people in the neighborhood want to go to the neighborhood school, we're still going to be busing people and there's still going to be choice. It's just that how you, how you prioritize, this gets to policy and this, you know, this way gets right back to policies, is, you know, what is the policy going to be? Should it be choice schools, neighborhood first choice and then after? I mean, that's a, that's a decision that this board has to make, I think. And if we do it for one, I still think it's relevant to say, well, should that be a district-wide policy? It doesn't mean we have to necessarily do them both at the same time as I think about this a little bit more. We could probably, you know, do this and then, and then address the question from a district-wide perspective too.
Mr. Smith?
That's kind of along my line. So this is a briefing item. So what is the timeline in which we have the opportunity for the staff to look at this from a district point of view? From a what if we have a policy that this is what the choice schools have as an option? That would be like Longfellow's? So what's the timeline here?
Well, the early part of January is the lottery, district-wide lottery. So that's, would be the deadline. In a couple of weeks, we have the kindergarten kickoff at Mail High School. And that's when incoming new kindergarteners, parents can interact with all the different schools. I don't think we would have enough time to do a district-wide, get all the, everything you would need to make a decision that's going to impact all the district-wide option schools probably by the January lottery deadline. It would, I mean, if you made the decision, almost have to probably go into effect for the January of nineteen.
Nineteen twenty?
Yeah.
I guess that's, that's kind of where my brain was going right now because we have a regular meeting on November fourteenth and then we have one other regular meeting in December. And I, I think, I don't know if other board members would like to have the opportunity to have a little bit more information or at least a little bit more opportunity to discuss it before jumping into it. And it's, and I, you know, and if that happens, I don't want you to think that we're, you know, not in favor of doing it. But I think there are a whole lot of things we may need to decide to look at a little bit more closely, you know, after thinking about it between now and November fourteen. Ms. Seelinger?
Thank you. I, I assume that you guys knew you were cracking the top on a can of worms when you came, maybe. But I really want to respect what you have brought to us. And we have sort of moved to the bigger district-wide issues. My feeling is that we deal with this issue and this question in a timely manner because this is how our presentation has come forward. That does not mean that we can't simultaneously or soon after look at a bigger picture at our facilities and other things. But I feel like out of respect, we should just look at this Longfellow piece first. And although it may be messy, there's nothing saying that if we say, if we voted yes to go ahead for next year, that we couldn't, maybe the next year, make a different decision for you. Not to say that we would, but if we came back with something that we would want to blanket in the policy. That is my, what I would like to say as terms of general. I really want to stay specific to the Longfellow situation.
Yeah, and just to reiterate that too, that's, my intent is not, my colleagues at other buildings have built programming. And my intent is not to come here and deconstruct their, what they've built because they have relationships with their families, they have clientele, they have built some pretty, pretty cool things, you know. And our intent is to talk about our kids in our community around us, across the street and behind us. That's, that's it. We didn't, you know, thinking peripherally, yeah, is there bigger things here? Yeah, possibly. But our role, you know, as educators is to support our kids. I don't want this to be the, well, we need to look at all the district-wide option schools because there's a lot of hard work that goes into everything that everybody's doing there. And that's not the intent of this whatsoever. But I understand from the board though, you have the bigger picture. But I, by understand from the board, though, you have the bigger picture to look at. I, I respect that.
I mean, what I could see happening would be maybe some parents at either of those other two schools who live in the neighborhood say, well, gosh, the Longfellow neighborhood parents, families get first dibs, why don't we? And I suppose that's something that, you know, if it comes up, we can settle it at this, at the same time or later. That's certainly a possibility. Like I think Ms. Seelinger said, it, it can be messy and I'm not opposed to messy, but.
And that was one of the things that we just felt strongly about, too, is we had precedent, too.
Yes.
You know, that's, that's some leverage that we thought that we had, too, is that we had this program, you know, for fourteen years, successful. And we wanted to continue that and to honor that, too.
Mrs. Becker?
I support what you do and I really like that, I mean, you're really interested in your neighborhood. Your, you know, staff has come to you, you do have precedents, it, it was how you're, you know, kind of how you guys were set up. I think that's all good and I think we should just, you know, decide one way or the other on your proposal. And then if we still have questions, other questions, why don't we have a study session on it? And so then, you know, we don't have to have all the discussion about it right now because we don't know. We're just, you know, having a brainstorming session for the most part. And so why don't we, you know, have a study session and, and really look at it for the whole district? But right now, as, I mean, Chris has said, Mike has said, you know what? You're the only ones who want to do it at this point. So maybe we're talking about something that nobody else really even, really even wants to consider. And so let's look at what's in front of us. And then, you know, early next year, maybe later this year, have a study session and really let's explore what, what would it look like in the whole district or just leave it at Longfellow because they really want to do it. And, and I'm really never have been a big believer in all of our schools have to be the same. And obviously they're not, each one of the district-wide schools are very different. And if they want to be half and half, two-thirds, one-third, you know, whatever, that's what they want to be. And I'm fine with that.
Mr. Barlow?
So this is a briefing item tonight?
Correct.
And so we won't be voting on it. And unless that was something that the board is ready to do. But I'm perfectly okay with, I think we've talked this pretty exhaustively. And I just ask a board member, want to thank you for your presentation. And I look forward to the opportunity to vote on this as well as considering my fellow board members' concerns of maybe be it a work session or whatever, seeing if there are concerns, doing due diligence for the other two schools. It is, and I accept what the superintendent says, to his knowledge, he's not heard of any looming desire or interest. I don't know if those of us on the board have received calls from the community saying, we have an interest, ask parents. I don't know, but maybe we can, Director Workman, Chair Workman, maybe the, this might be one of the first listening sessions that the board may have in, in those areas where we can go specifically to those areas to, to raise the question than we hear firsthand.
Anything else?
You know, I just, I'm thinking of the, this, our district has had a history and it goes, you know, way, you know, way back to accommodate. You know, I mean, choice schools in an effect are an accommodation. They're people who wanted to have a certain school, you know, teaching a certain kind of curriculum. So we, as a district, historically have always tried to accommodate, you know, those that have a desire for something a little bit different. This is no, this is no different than, this is a, this is a request for accommodation to go back, you know, accommodate the neighborhood. I, I, I support that, actually. I mean, I think that's, that's a good thing. I, I don't see any negative to doing that. They've done their homework. The, 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 we know it's going to have a positive effect on, on transportation, just think that through. I can't think how there'd be any negative, negative there. So I think maybe looking at this as a, a further accommodation, you know, for this, for the parents and for the community of this school is not necessarily a bad way to look at it. And we hear from those, hey, we'd like to have that accommodation, too. They can, they can bring it forward, do the homework and the research and we can make a decision if that's something to make, something to make sense. But I, I agree with Deborah. I, I think we could probably make a decision on this and then, and then maybe if we want to ask a district-wide question, we can study that a little further or a little deeper. I think we can look at this as a, as a single, you know, a single request and, and do that, so. If you favor do that, whether we, when we do it, I don't, when we weren't prepared to act, I'm okay. Want to do it tonight, I'll do it tonight. You want to wait, we'll wait.
I think in lieu of a lot of the questions that have been raised, whether anybody else thinks they're relevant or not, I would certainly like to give the community the opportunity to.
Sure, that makes sense.
Put their input rather than us making an up or down decision tonight because I don't think that's really fair to anyone. And I'm not sure if that's what, were you expecting us to, or hoping for us to make a decision?
I had an opportunity to present.
Yes, I'm really glad you did. I think it was a very informative and.
Like you said, it popped up, he's been, he was chewing on your, your, two or three years before you let him put it on the agenda.
I would like to, it sounds like moving forward, we're just going to make a decision on this current recommendation and then explore district, other district-wide option schools. So is there any other information that the board would need to make that decision? The plan was to bring this back as a action item at our November board meeting. So is there anything that the board would like us to bring to that meeting, so to help you make that decision?
It could be on the consent agenda unless you hear, if we hear an outcry from the public or something, that's something we need to take off. And we can always have the option to pull it off a consent, as a consent item, too. Whatever, however you want to do it, it's fine with me.
Well, if I may, Chair Workman, were there things you heard us, we, the board, say that we wanted the district to look into regarding Longfellow? Or you're asking, what are those things now?
Yeah, some of the things that were asked, but then they were more, I think, looking district, you know, district-wide perspective. So if you need that in order to make the decision on this recommendation, then we can have that. But what I won't probably couldn't have is, you know, we're going to have to talk to the staff and all the other buildings and see where they're at on that. I, I, I don't doubt you're going to get somebody who may live across the street from Lincoln or Washington say, hey, I'd love that school to be neighborhood first. I mean, from parents, I think you're going to hear, I don't know if we're going to hear from staff from the other district-wide schools say, hey, we'd like our school to be neighborhood slash district-wide, too. I, I just, because that has not been brought to my attention yet.
Anything else? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you for your time, appreciate the conversation, that was great.
I do, yes, that question, information, that I think if we could just, just one, a single question. If we could know on the, the school, the choice schools lottery, the, the neighborhood, the number of people in the neighborhood who applied for the lottery and get, see what those numbers are in relation to.
Just Longfellow, all the others.
To outside, out of neighborhood, in neighborhood, how many people out of neighborhood from lottery, how many got selected? Neighborhood, how many got selected? Is there a, is there a, you know, precedent towards that we're doing more out of the neighborhood than in the neighborhood? I mean, that's a district-wide question, not for this one, but if we're thinking about down the road in the future.
Yeah, I can, I, I can tell you what you're, what we have found, at least since I've been here, is that many families apply for every district-wide option school we have. And part of it has to be, you know, I'll remind you back when we did a, if you remember my first or second year here, we did a, a phone survey to try to find out why kindergarten, why we weren't getting kindergarten kids. And one of, and then one of the questions asked about how do you learn about the school? And the number one answer was from their neighborhood or somebody they know. So unfortunately, the word out in this community, and I learned of it rather quickly when I moved here, was, oh, the choice schools are the best. They can't explain why they think, but that's just, they've been told. So the perception out there is that the district-wide schools are better than the others. So then parents apply for all of them because they just want to get into one of those.
I don't think it's still, though, you know, you'll still have to be able to segment based on the number of people within the neighborhood and outside of the neighborhood and, and the number, how they, how they fall out. I think just we, have that basic, just have that basic, have that basic question.
Of the neighborhood students who applied for a particular school, how many of them actually won a lottery?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I just, I'm just saying, I may live in, across the street from Washington, but I may have applied for all, all of the district-wide schools.
I get, the only one I, but in this case, then, the only one that I'm interested in is the neighborhood, the Washington neighborhood. And they're, and they're, they're applying for the Washington school and whether they got in or not.
Okay, I understand now, okay.
Yeah, so that, so everywhere else is in the other universe. So if you can look at each school like that, that would, might give us a little bit of insight to what's going on with the current way we're selecting it anyway.
You want that for all of them or just Longfellow?
I think it'd be good to disagree whenever we get it, but we don't know, we don't, I don't, I don't necessarily say we need that for, to make this decision for Longfellow. We've got that information. I think as we ponder the larger question, whether or not it should be a district-wide policy, that one question, that one question there would tell me a lot about where, where we are, I think. If, if we got, if we're kind of, if neighborhoods are, are being, I won't say, they're, 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 they're not, they're not getting the same rate of, of selection into the neighborhood school as the out of, the out of neighborhood kids are. That's.
But they couldn't, I mean, I, I don't know how they could.
We could, but.
Well, because it's, it's a lottery, so, I mean, we're, aren't we basically pulling a name out of a hat?
Yeah, all the, for example, we'll, we'll pull and say, let's say there was, I don't remember, he put in, two hundred that applied for kindergarten at Longfellow. We tell the computer to pick twenty-two spots, that's how many we have after we've done sibling preference. Then it just randomly selects twenty-two. We start calling those people and if they don't take, accept it, then we go to the computer and kick out another names. Then it kicks out another name, so that, that's how we do the.
I mean, you know, by, by the very nature of the school, it's not, I mean, you're not going to have, I mean, it doesn't matter where you live. I mean, for Washington, it doesn't matter where you live, so everything is equal. Every, every house.
Yeah, well, we would, we would have to just draw, like he did, just draw a radius, a walking distance radius.
How many kids actually live in that Washington?
Walking distance.
Walking distance, walking distance, you know.
I don't know why that matters. I, I'm sorry, but I just don't see why it matters.
Why would it matter?
It would show a preference of the neighborhood families wanting to be in their neighborhood school when it's not the neighborhood school.
Okay, no, it, it wouldn't show the ones wanting to go there because all we're looking at the ones who actually are in.
But we can also look at the ones who aren't in.
Yeah, I think it's a question, we're looking at the question of, should neighborhood, the question is, should neighborhood, your residents in the neighborhood count more for than it does just as, as a community, should you get some preference for being in the neighborhood?
No, I know, and, but, and I, I agree.
I think you just got to know how many people in the neighborhood actually wanted to go there and couldn't go there.
Do we keep track of that?
Well, Longfellow had it because they said six point nine percent of their students.
We, we have a, we have the people who applied and then we can probably manually look at their addresses to see where they would, if they would fall within that walking.
Yeah, so for the past, for the past six years, do we want to look at the thousand people who applied to Washington? We want to look at.
I hope not.
One of them to see, are they in the neighborhood or are they not in the neighborhood? I mean.
Oh, what percent of the neighborhood, I guess, what percent of the neighborhood kids that applied get, got in?
Yeah, but the computer's really smart, it ought to be able to figure that out.
Well, I would suggest if you're asking us to go back a few years, only go back, if you remember, up until a couple of years ago, once you got your name on, you were on this, ever, you were on this list forever. You may, your child may have been a preschooler and you got in, you put yourself on the list. And then your child was a fourth grader, when we switched to you had to reapply every year. So the list shrunk once we went to reapply every year. So I think that's, we've only done that for like two years, so we could probably go back two years.
That's enough.
I think two years is.
I think two, two years is enough.
Okay. All right, yeah, we can, we'll just have to draw around Lincoln and, and Washington. We just have to draw, you know, a walking path and then take anybody that was within that walking would be considered a neighborhood person.
I mean, because, well, we can, we can talk about it later, we'll talk about it later, yes.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, where are we? Seven point oh two refuse and recycling services. This is another information item. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, I'm going to call Scott Sheridan, Executive Director of Facilities, and Andrew, Coordinator of Facility Services. We talked a little bit about this last meeting and, and before we put an RFP out, we thought we would get your guidance to make sure that our RFP covers everything that you want to make sure that's in there before we put a request out for bids to do our garbage and refuge hauling. We have some ideas that we thought we should put in there, but looking for the board to give us some more guidance on that. Unfortunately, from our last meeting, our truck is out of commission, it won't run. So we're down to one truck that's going to be used for both right now until we make a decision on what we're going to do moving forward. So I'll turn it over to Scott.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. As the superintendent told you, we did present you with that twenty-five-year plan for vehicles at the last board meeting. And one of the items on there was a refuse truck. And it prompted some discussion and some comments regarding the last RFP that was submitted back in September of 2011. One of the concerns was about the limitations put on the scheduled pickup in that RFP that limited the flexibility for the contractor, whoever you would contract with, be able to come in and pick up whenever they wanted to. And as we reviewed the RFP from 2011 after that board meeting, we, we found other nuances as well that caused us some concern, such as in that last RFP, it talked about that they had to use the existing dumpsters that were at the sites. And as time has evolved, if a contractor has a different style truck, they might need a front-end loader versus the rear-loading dumpsters that we have. And how fair is that to a potential bidder if they only have rear, if they only have front-loading trucks? And so all these different things, as we talked about this, we created a list of nuances in our, and we put them down in our board doc of things that need to be considered prior to writing that RFP. And based on the conversation at the last board meeting, we were hoping to get some information from you as far as what your priorities are, not only with the nuances that are listed in the board doc, but anything else that we missed, that we didn't list here. So as we prepare to send this RFP out, that we have addressed all the concerns that you might have to get more of a proposal that you're looking for, to be a more realistic proposal.
Ms. Seelinger?
So thank you for coming before us and thank you for the information. I'm just looking for some procedural information. So you were looking at sending out RFPs, but that does not preclude from us continuing to service our own garbage and refuse with a truck that's fixed or is new, correct?
That is correct. What we, what the interpretation, interpretation we had is we wanted to provide you as much information based on what it would cost us to hire a private contractor versus the cost that it was to buy a new truck and the maintain its services, gas, oil, personnel costs and all that. And compare the two and let you make the decision, a more informed decision on which way you want to go, which one of those two ways.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I, I really appreciate your approach to this. You know, in terms of how the nuances, I would ask them to how they would, you know, manage those nuances. And what are, what are they proposing to make that part of what they have to describe to you, you know, in terms of how they do it? For instance, do, are they, do they want to use our equipment, you know, our container, our containers or whatever? Or do they say, no, we'll, we'll buy them from you, but we're going to do something, something totally different to that to accommodate whether we got front-end loaders or, or back-end loaders or what have you. Let them tell us how they would, they would propose to do that and give us a complete, you know, turnkey proposal. You know, and you might get three of them, four of them, they might be three or four all different. And then plus what we're, plus what we're doing. And then we can, you know, make a choice as to what is the, what is the best, you know, best for the bang for the, for the buck long term.
So what I hear you saying is ask them how they would do it rather than us saying, this is how you can't do it. this is how you can't do it.
Yeah, but here are some nuances that we know you have to consider, so tell us how you, how you are going to deal with these nuances. For instance, you know, schedule, you know, pickup schedule, why they propose a schedule they're doing, or you can't, if we say, you know, we got some nuances around certain times of school times when people are coming in, you know, tell us how you're going to get around that, whatever, you know, you've identified some of them here, and they may think of some that we didn't think of, that they would want to, they would want to put in there. I think to the extent that you're just kind of making an open-ended RFP, say, we're thinking about, you know, looking, doing a different way of doing this, tell us what you're going to do, how you're going to do it, and what it's going to cost us, and tell us how you're going to, you know, how, what impact this has, are you going to use the, our equipment that we have, or is that something you propose as part of your proposal to buy us from and replace it or use it or whatever? So I think, to the extent that they can just have an open-ended, you know, proposal to you with some of the nuances, you know, listed, then maybe that would get us to where we need to, to get it. Because they're in the business, we're not in that, you know, we're not in that, but we're having a service because we got to, we got to take care of this, we've got to do this, but maybe they have some different ideas that we wouldn't even think of because, you know, they're hauling a lot more garbage than what we are, even though we do much of it.
Mrs. Becker.
So what are you thinking about the, because on your route schedule, I mean, there's still quite a few things from the county, so I don't know that we need to be including the county in this, I mean, I think we can...
Well, it'll be in their proposal, because it's revenue to us, it's revenue to us, it would be, have to be, if we're providing a service, it'll be part of their proposal because...
I know, but why, okay, so I don't understand why we would still continue to be doing anything with the county, I mean, the county can take care of their own garbage pickup, can they not?
Well, I understood, from the last meeting, was that we're actually, they're paying a little bit more than what it's costing us to do it.
We currently are now, yes. I would imagine if we would go to a private contractor, that we would cut that tie, unless for some reason you wanted us to continue to do that, and then the county would have to do it.
No, I'm thinking, yeah, I'm thinking we should cut that tie, and the county's on their own, for their own garbage pickup.
And from the city and county perspective, I don't know if we would even have the option to say, we are now going to have somebody else contract to do the school district garbage and refuse, and by the way, they're also going to continue doing these sites. I suspect the city and council would, city and county would say, probably not. And I do believe that, once we cut those ties, we cannot hook them back up again, should we, some point down the road, decide we're going to now do our own refuse collecting again. So, once that option's off the table, it's gone, as we've been granted.
I hear what Director Becker is saying, I don't necessarily disagree with it, but if we're actually, if it's actually a net plus to have it, for, if we're providing a service to ourselves, then maybe it's something we want to leave in there. But I certainly, I certainly understand that desire, say, well, no, let's just take care of ourselves and not worry about them, except if that adds more cost to us, if it reduces our cost by doing the other piece, and then that compares to the other proposals favorably, then we have to consider it, but, you know, I'll leave it to you. I leave it to you to figure out how you want to, how to do it. I think the main thing here is, if we're going to ask people who are in this business to give us a proposal, let's let them, let's not tie their hands with any kind of things that, you know, might be, things to be considered, that we're concerned about, and yes, we need to concern, tell us how you're going to address them, you need to address, tell us how you're going to address it. We're not going to dictate to you how you propose to manage that nuance, or around it, or in it, whatever.
I mean, to me, what we want from the company is, we want them to come and pick up our recyclables and our refuse, and we don't really want them there when students are coming and going. I mean, to me, that's about the only thing that, that I'm really concerned about, I mean, we just need to have it picked up and taken away, and not when kids are...
The only thing I really liked in the last conversation we had when we were in this a few years ago, was that one of the providers had told me afterwards that, you know, they wanted to propose something totally different, they would have bought all our containers, they would have came in, put larger ones in there, they would have came in there on Saturday, you know, in the morning, on Saturday morning, and emptied all that stuff. They have the containers now, you put food stuff, they can tighten those things down, and you don't get the odors and stuff. They would propose a wholly, totally different system or way of doing it that would be more efficient from their perspective, because they're not only thinking about this piece of business, but they're thinking about all the other business, and they have to do it as efficiently as possible in order to make a profit. And if they can do that cheaper than what we can do it, and still make a profit, then I guess we'd have to question ourselves, why are we doing this? But we're really here to educate kids anyway. But, at the end of the day, if we can, if we can, by having the trucks and having our staff to do that, if it's cheaper for us to do that, then I'm okay with that too. I just want to know, I just want to know the answer to the question.
Yeah, I think, for me, the big no-goshed on is, we can't have them picking up at drop-off or after school, it's just the safety of kids and traffic and everything, it's just, we can't have them doing that. And then, I do have a concern that picking it up once a week, I don't care how airtight your things are, certain months, that milk that's sitting in there, it gets pretty, that food that gets thrown away, it gets pretty stinky, even the frequency we pick it up too, but I mean, I...
We're not using the kind of containers that they're talking about.
No, we're not, we're not, but I hope, I just hope if we, if that...
We really need to have one of their containers that's full of garbage, it's been sitting there for a weekend, and you could do the smell test on it.
Yeah, I mean, we could do it, we could do it cheaper.
On a hot August day.
We could do it cheaper ourselves if we didn't pick it up as frequently as we did, and just tell the people to live with the smell, but I think what we have out there is not really, the only thing I've seen that's really restrictive is not during pickup and dismissal time, which I think they would understand that part. I mean, we need to know what you're going to charge us when we, hey, we need you to make an extra run at this spot because they had a dance that night or whatever, I mean, we need to know what that's going to, what they're going to charge us. Really, the only one I see in there that's kind of restrictive is the, you know, not before and after school, but other than that, I think what he has on there is pretty reasonable. To be honest with you, if it's cheaper to do, have somebody else do it, we would love it. That's one less headache that we have. We don't have to worry about a truck breaking down, we don't have to worry about managing a driver, not that our driver's bad, I don't want to be perfectly clear on that, but that's less that we have to manage. The only reason we believe we're doing it is because we are doing it cheaper, but maybe we're not. Maybe there's a better way to do it, and if there is, I know some guys that would be really happy to see that go away.
Well, in 1986 or 87, the district went to doing its own collection simply because of the issues with the kids outside on the playground, trucks driving every which way, and it was, I think it was initially certainly a safety issue that made us decide to do our own, because we could have complete control over it.
Yeah, I understand, I understand that, and then, now today, there were probably one or two providers or haulers back then, and today, there's multiple, lots of competition, so, you know, pricing's probably, and so I think, till we do the analysis, I don't think we know the answer to the question, but I think we owe it to our, to the taxpayers to do the analysis, and, you know, because if we save money by doing it, that's more dollars we can get to the classroom, and that's why we're really here.
The other question that I have is, if the district should, or, I'm sorry, if the city should decide to do, you know, garbage contractors serve specific parts of the city, how that might affect any arrangement that we have with any contractor that we might be using in the meantime, and what that might do to our costs? I mean, I realize that those are probably questions you can't answer, but certainly another, another thing to throw in there.
I'll have to look into that. There might be some exemptions for businesses. I mean, I understand the residential piece, where they want to limit it to certain areas, but I'm not, I'm not sure, but I would imagine a business that has a high volume could have it every day.
Right, but if we have, I mean, our business is spread out all over the place, so...
Exactly. But I can look into that to verify it, yes.
That would be helpful.
Yeah, I know, that came up a while back, is it still having conversation?
They didn't do it.
They didn't do it though.
Not yet, but...
They potentially could, yeah.
That's something, they talked about in the past, and then they didn't go down that path.
Ms. Seelinger.
Thank you. So, I am just returning to process, because this is a slightly different process than we generally use. So you're going to go out for RFPs, but we're really putting out our own RFP, in a sense, correct?
Correct.
And so, how are, you know, sometimes we do the best value, sometimes we do the lowest price, what is the process for this? Because I hear a board member saying, well, if it's cheaper, then we do that, but we also have these other considerations, so how is that going to, how do you see that rolling out?
Good question, how do you see it rolling out? There's several ways we could do it, we could go just the low bid, but then you live with whoever that company is and hope that they can meet the standards that you have set in the RFP, or you could do the best value, where we actually interview the staff members or the proposed, the company that's proposing it, to get a more intimate feel as far as, in our sense, do we feel they are capable of providing the service? I mean, we're talking about 33 buildings, they're not, obviously not picked up every day, but it's a substantial contract, I would think, for a private contractor in the city, so they're going to put the time and effort into it, I believe, but we want to be sure that we have the right company, that we can trust to abide by what says in that RFP, particularly the safety piece, to make sure that they abide by the restrictions we have in there, so...
So would you be thinking that the district would literally be doing its own RFP in the same kind of format, and if so, and if we are the ones who are potentially hiring ourselves, how would that work in terms of determining best value?
That's an interesting question.
I, when I hear those words, I get what you're saying, but I trust the individuals that, because like I said, if it shows that if somebody else can do quality work cheaper, this is not something, oh, we just don't want to give up this service, because it's something that we'd love to get rid of it, if we could.
I think you got to look at the perform, I mean, best value is ability to perform, and your confidence level in the people to be performed. We have to have that level of confidence, whether we use best value or bid, that they've got, they've got to be, we got to have confidence that they're, they'll be able to perform, so maybe this is a hybrid kind of thing, hybrid in between, I think, you know, we just, it's, so strictly, from my point, it's cost, that's one of the considerations, but it also has to be, they have to be able to perform, and they have to perform in a way that doesn't jeopardize the educational, you know, mission that we have here. It can't jeopardize that in any way, so if safety's an issue, then we have to, we have to recognize that, but that's one of the nuances, they'll have to tell you how they're going to propose that, and then we have to make a judgment, you have to make a judgment whether or not they answered that, you know, to our satisfaction or not, and we have confidence in their ability to deliver on that. I think, you know, at the end of the day, it's cost and performance, you've got to have confidence in both of those. It just, you know, we certainly know we can do it ourselves, we've been doing it ourselves, so, you know, that, you know, if you want to look at that, you know, that's one of the things we've got to, it's not just the cost, but, you know, is somebody else going to perform it and be able to do it in a way that's satisfactory? And you'll have to give us what you think about that, and I'm going to trust your judgment on that, be quite honest, like today, like you said, Mr. Munoz, I'll trust your judgment on that. If you feel, well, you know, these are kind of equal things, but all given to consider that, performance, we know what we got already, we're going to, you know, recommend that we do this, I'm okay with that, as long as, you know, the numbers are, the numbers are close to that, then I'm fine with that. But I want to make sure, if we're going to ask private people to spend the time, because this will take a lot of time for them to go through and answer this question and put the time forward, that we do respect the time that they put in, that we're going to take this serious, and that we're not just going to, you know, do it in a way that tilts it one way or the other. I think in one respect, we're asking our district to say, can you compete with the private sector, and if you can, let's go for it, well then we'll select you. We'll know at the end of this process, if we do it right, we'll know if that's the case or not.
Since we're down to one truck now, what would you anticipate your timeline on this being?
As soon as possible, we'd be sending it out.
Right, so you would send the RFP, and then, how long is the RFP out for? Is there an arbitrary deadline, or do you have to...
It's usually, well, we'd have to give them enough time, at least in our opinion, to research it enough to get them real good detail.
They should be able to do it in 30 days, shouldn't they?
Yes.
30 days, and I think one of the questions we've got to ask is, when could they start?
Right.
You know, how quickly could they, if we make a decision, how quickly could they propose start service?
Mrs. Becker.
So I have a couple of questions. So are you thinking of just a single year contract? Are you thinking multiple years, or what were your thoughts on that?
Our preference, my preference would be multiple years.
I think we would have to do multiple years, for one, because we can't, once we lose our license or whatever it is to do this, we'll never be able to do it again, and we're going to always have to contract it, but you do a multiple year, but just like we do with the others, you build in a clause where you can...
So like, every five years, we, it comes up for bids again, or something like that? Or every three, one in three years? I'm just asking.
I believe the last one was three years, but we can make it whatever we want.
No, I'm just asking, I don't know what, you know, three years maybe.
They might, they'll probably price it differently if it's a three-year deal or a five-year deal, so I would ask them, you know, give them some range, we know it has to be multiple years, what's the minimum multiple years, what's the maximum multiple years? Maybe we want them to say, you know, give us a three-year proposal or a five-year proposal, or a seven-year proposal, I don't know if we want, I don't think we want to go much more than that, but...
I don't think they would either.
Longer for them is better, because they get the vehicles, pay for the vehicles and stuff, it's actually, that works our favor, the more time we give them, you know, probably works our favor too.
Well, especially if it's a company that's going to have to invest in putting their dumpsters in our schools, there's going to be some kind of investment, and probably more trucks to accommodate us.
They may have, they may have all, everything they need to just, to do it right now, I mean, we don't know until they propose.
I believe the bigger of the two companies in town probably could absorb our account within their current routes, but they would have a higher initial investment of front-load dumpsters.
Yes.
Some of those smaller local companies would most likely use a rear-load dumpster similar to ours, and in that case, you know, they probably would have to add a route to absorb an account as big as ours, I'm just guessing what they might say.
I guess we'll find out.
So, you would like us to do a three and a five-year proposal?
I think so, I think it makes sense.
I have a couple more questions.
Sure, go ahead.
So, I do think, kind of, I know we kind of talked about the hybrid, the hybrid kind of best value, but I think really talking, you know, kind of talking it through with each of the companies, and say, well, what is it that you're thinking about, how, you know, how would you, you know, how would you accommodate our, you know, the situation here? And then my final question is, will this be paid out of the general fund? And maybe this is more for John. So, so are all the expenses right now for this paid out of the general fund, and how is that going to work?
Some of the money for the tipping fees is paid out of the...
Service fund, since the food is probably a lot of the tonnage.
Forty percent of the tipping fees are out of student nutrition services.
And that will still continue? So there won't be any, so there won't be any adverse effect to the general fund if we go out and purchase this, purchase this service?
I guess it all depends on the price, but yes, I believe...
Well, I mean, so, I mean, there's, so, us doing it, so if it was exactly even, the costs were exactly even...
You're just asking, can we still charge food service for a portion of the cost?
Yeah, so, yeah, and it's not going to be, all of a sudden, everything has to come out of the general fund, whereas before, only part of it had to come out of the general fund or whatever, so none of that has to change at all, whether we do it internally or whether we purchase the service.
You are correct on that, yep.
Okay, all right, thank you.
One quick question to piggyback on what she said, but what we're using now for our, the maintenance of this vehicle and potentially the replacement of it, that's just like a separate line item that is still in the general fund, correct? It's not like it's a restricted fund or some other silo off...
We have put some of the money aside into an assigned fund balance to pay for a new truck. We have enough money in there for a new truck if we went down that path, without affecting our current budget, wouldn't have to take any dollars out of any general operations.
Okay, thank you.
I believe we're in the $300,000 range.
So, if we had, if there's a private, so this comes in, that $300,000 potentially becomes free up to go into the, to the classrooms.
You are correct on that, we could put that back in the general fund.
But we still have to pay...
That's the reason why we owe it to ourselves, to at least look at it.
But we would still have to pay for the service.
Yeah.
I mean, that money would have to come from somewhere.
But we capture the money they put aside, because that would be a savings at that point, they wouldn't have to expend that money.
Another potential that I just want to throw out there is, we would ask for our bids for recycling, and we'd also ask for bids for refuse. You might come to the conclusion that maybe if we keep our recycling truck, it might be more beneficial for us... You might come to the conclusion that maybe if we keep our recycling truck, it might be more beneficial for us just to do the recycling piece, yet hire our, hire out the private contractor to do the refuse, or vice versa as well, so...
So you would have, you would have to price it individually and combined?
Yes, that's my suggestion. You know, that's how we talk about it.
That makes sense. Thank you again for...
Any other questions? Mr. Munoz?
Don't we typically do two weeks for RFPs or not? Would it be longer than that?
We've done a variety of them, but two weeks is the minimal, minimum that we do.
Yeah, I'm just a little concerned about us being without that one truck now and having to push this out further and further, but I guess another couple of weeks won't make that much of a difference.
And that's assuming that if we do contract it out, that they can start right away?
We could repair the truck, but it would be about twenty thousand dollars right now to put a new engine in it, because it is, it needs a new engine now. We could get it back up and running, potentially a week or so.
But what could we get if we go out of the business? We could, could we sell those two trucks to someone?
The broken-down truck is probably worth five to eight thousand, maybe, mainly in parts. The one that's running now is older as well, it's a two thousand and five with over nine thousand hours on the motor, so not new by any means, just wild estimate, we might get between thirty to forty-five-ish thousand for that one.
I guess, I guess the point I was trying to get to is, does it make sense to go ahead and fix it so we can have it running? And then if we end up contracting out, we'll get that twenty thousand back when we sell, sell the trucks?
If we were to go down the road of purchasing a new truck to be used by the district and keeping the service in-house, lead time on a new truck is eight months, I know that.
So we can make a good...
So either way, we're gonna, we're gonna have, we gotta have that truck running, even if we end up deciding to stay internally, because we gotta wait that long. I mean, we don't want to do one truck for that long period of time while we're waiting for a new one to come if we end up going that way.
Yeah, would prefer not to.
I, I think it makes, because you might, we might be in a position where you have to, like, put the new engine in, and might just have to spend the twenty thousand. If we get to the point where you can't do it, we don't have enough time to do it, we might have to spend the twenty, the twenty thousand dollars, but I think we have to discount that, and we have to figure out, we, an analysis how we, we discount that or whatever.
I have a question, so we were just talking about somebody else buying our used, broken-down truck. Is there, would there be any sense in looking at buying another used truck that's in better condition than what we have in terms of having something that we know is gonna work?
We can do some research and try to find something. You're kind of rolling the dice, and you don't know what you're getting, you know, just like buying a used car. You might be buying someone else's problems, you might be getting a great deal, we just don't know.
I just thought I'd throw that out. You can do whatever you want to with it. It's all garbage.
I guess, well, why, we think, if we do the analysis, that leads us to a decision, a long-term decision, but in the short term, if, if it comes to the, like, we gotta spend twenty thousand dollars to be able to get rid of the garbage, I mean, that's, that's, that's what we're just gonna have to do, probably. You're probably gonna have to make a decision today, if we, if the timing for this somehow doesn't work out, and you get pushed up against the wall where you actually, you might have to spend it, the twenty. If it takes eight months to get a new one, and it takes sixty days to know if we're gonna, you know, get new, if we're gonna replace, go out of the business and have somebody else do it, you know, we might be thirty to forty-five days away here from making a decision on that one way or the other. If, can we last, can we get by that long, do you think, without spending twenty thousand?
Potentially, if our current truck keeps running.
That's a big...
Again, it's, it's a big if, that's not a new truck by any means either. So we're risking breakdown every day.
And there is overtime to pay, because it's doing dual service with the recycling as well.
Mr. Barlow.
So just a what-if, so what would we do if the one operating truck were to break down today?
No idea.
We'd be scrambling to repair it.
We'd probably be hiring a private contractor to do it something in the interim.
Potentially, yeah.
And paying whatever rate they, they're gonna charge us to come in, in the interim.
So you need us, what are you actually looking for from us this evening?
This is an information item, so...
Well, some direction?
I think we've gotten enough now. I want to just reiterate the piece, when he mentioned the five or six thousand dollar value, that's the current truck that's broken down as it is right now for scrap.
Yeah, so what would happen if you, yeah, if you, if you put the twenty thousand in to repair it?
It might be worth thirty thousand, so you might get your money back out.
Yeah.
If we do decide to go to a private contractor. So as I'm standing here, sitting here talking, I'm convincing myself, I think we need to repair the truck, because it's gonna pay for itself anyway, when we do get rid of it.
Could you use some of those three hundred thousand dollars on the side to fix the truck?
Could, I'm sorry?
Couldn't you use some of that three hundred thousand dollars on the side to fix the truck?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that's what it's, we've been using it just to repair them and then to buy a new one, if we ever buy a new one, so it's, yeah, it won't impact the...
I think you gotta, you gotta keep the fleet, you gotta keep, you gotta keep it work, you gotta be able to do what you gotta do in the interim, so...
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, it, it seems like, I mean, if, you know, with the overtime and, and everything else, maybe it seems like it would maybe make more sense just to fix the truck, and then if we...
Still do the analysis, right?
Yeah, definitely, still do the analysis, because that's really just a short-term fix anyway. And then if we do need, you know, if we do end up, if we can sell everything, then it will be worth more selling it with the new engine than with sitting on the sidelines.
Fortunately, that's not a decision the board has to make, whether to repair or not, because it's only twenty thousand dollars, and you get to have that, that fund.
Good point, good point.
No, just do what you gotta do.
And, and one last point, if I could, the, if we do go out for private contracting, there still will be some in-house costs involved for the management of the refuse program, and then there's these little nuances. We have certain containers at ball fields that are up on hills that might require our staff members to, you know, to...
Bring those curbside?
Bring them curbside to get picked up, and so there still might be some of our own in-house staff time and management piece that we're gonna have to figure out to put into that private contract proposal as well. Just so you know, if you see that in the future, that, that's where that's coming.
So you probably want to ask them to minimize, what they can do to minimize that.
Exactly, yeah.
That'd be one of the things in the proposal you want to address. I have a solution for you, where you don't have to do anything.
Is there anything else you need from us tonight?
I appreciate all the input. Very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Seven point oh three, RPS-RPT transportation update. This is an information item, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, we met last week, Scott and I met with the two individuals from Rochester Public Transit, and we're getting ready to do Phase Two. They will actually be taking it to the city council to approve the Phase Two study, I think at their first November meeting. But just kind of a, a little summary of what's gonna be all part of the Phase Two study. We're gonna identify specific bus stop locations, create the routes and travel times, and create a schedule. We would be at this spot at this time, and this spot at this time. Finalize ridership numbers, identify loading and potential overload, set up the final, final schedule. Right now, we're looking at an eight, eight-thirty start time for secondary students. I think I shared with you one of the other times that if we go earlier in that, it overlaps with their peak time, and then they would have to buy more buses to accommodate our kids. So if we go after eight-thirty, they can do their peak time and then use some of those buses to transport our students. They have to identify the cost for equipment and facilities, operating costs, how many drivers they're gonna need and what that's gonna cost. We'd have to work with them to finalize behavior and conduct on these buses, and then basically come down to a final financial plan on how we would, they, the city, and how we would fund it. Obviously, we would just use some of the funding that we're currently doing, would just now transfer to RPT. And then we're gonna have to prove, put out a new RFP just for transporting elementary kids and some secondary. For example, the ones that live up in the Nor, Orinoco area, the city buses don't run that far north, so we would have to use yellow buses for them. So all that has to happen. We were hoping the cost would be, at the time, they told us they thought the overall cost would be about twenty thousand. And if you remember, we split the costs for Phase One study with the city. Just received an email from them this afternoon, it's fifty thousand, so our share would be twenty-five thousand for that study.
So we've paid twenty already?
We paid twenty already.
So it'd be an additional twenty-five for the next phase.
Right. This would be the final step. Then, once this is done, we would share everything with the board. They would share everything with the city council, and both groups would probably have to decide, is this a partnership that we want to enter in? We talked about maybe doing that as a joint meeting, so we could just present it to both groups at the same time, or we may do it separately, I don't, we haven't quite finalized that. My recommendation would be to do a joint one, just to, this way, the board's aware of the questions they're asking, they're aware of what questions we're asking, and then both sides would have to vote if this is something that they wanted to do. Just as a reminder, even though we're, a lot of this work is happening now, we're looking at nineteen-twenty school year before this would actually be implemented. And part of it has to do with, I don't understand their funding totally, but their funding, state and federal funding is based on ridership. And as their ridership increased, they have access to more state and federal funding. So in order to buy, at, in Phase One, we found out that they were gonna have to purchase twenty-two additional buses and twenty, find twenty-two different drivers to accommodate our students, and they couldn't generate the funding to purchase those as quickly as we would prefer them to. They did ask us if we would be interested in, in pilinging a school, maybe next year. Unfortunately, we can't have one high school on a different schedule than the other high schools because of C-Tech and just everything else going on, so we told them we, we would, we would like that, but we really just can't do that. So probably in November, we'll be bringing back to the, not that we have to, since it's under a hundred thousand, we need your approval, but we'll bring, so you can see the actual agreement that we're entering in with them for Phase Two of this study. So that's where we're at right now. I, I think that eventually, this is, this will work out. I, I see it's the only way we can get to a one-tiered busing system. We just don't have the ability to go to a one-tiered. If you remember, we, last time we did an RFP for transportation, we asked people to bid on a one-tiered and then on a two-tiered. Nobody bid on the one-tiered, because they don't have enough buses or drivers to accommodate us and all the private schools, students that we transport. I don't think that's gonna cha, I mean, I don't see, that doesn't change. I can tell you, our current contract with per student are struggling to find drivers. They're getting drivers from Illinois to come down here, live here during the week, drive our kids, and then go home on weekends. So it, it's, it'd be a challenge for anybody to accommodate the number of kids that we transport every day. So that's kind of where we're at right now. They didn't really give me a, a timeline on how long Phase Two would take, but as soon as that is complete, we'll meet with them, and then I can give the board an update on the results of that Phase Two study.
I would also like to kind of keep under consideration that one of the things, the main thing, I believe, that is driving this is so that our secondary students do not start school so early. And we know there is just an abundance of research to back up the benefits of starting later. So if this should not work, then we will have to figure out a, a solution to have our secondary students start at a later time with the current system that we have. That's my opinion, others may not agree. But I'm really hoping that this will work out. It seems like both sides are putting a lot of work and effort into it, so...
It just seems like, it just seems like the economy, there's economies of scale here that we're not getting the benefit of now, and they aren't either. So doing this together, because we are gonna provide a lot of ridership that, that isn't there now, so...
Yeah, I...
And hopefully work out, the students would be able to ride the bus anytime they want to ride the bus.
Well, that's, that's kind of what we're asking, that they can use their IDs, what probably, what we're looking at is the current student IDs they have, and each year, we would use a different color sticker on it to say that they have rights to ride the bus, but they could also use it on weekends as well. It's just, it's, I can tell you, they're very supportive, and they want to make this work, because what they, and they tell us this every time we meet, they want to teach and get our young students used to riding city buses, because that's something that, as you become an adult, and as we continue to get larger, we need more adults riding the city buses than driving downtown all the time, so...
It's mortal shift, trying to get people to shift their, away from cars.
Thank you for that update.
Yep.
Okay. Seven point oh four, administrative procedures. This is an information item, Mrs. Becker.
Uh, Mrs. Becker, okay. I think Jean said that Superintendent Munoz would, would say anything. She did have, the only thing...
Unfortunately, they just told me today that Ann Becker was doing that one, I'm sorry.
Um, no, Jean did, um, Jean did give me a note that I was supposed to read for everybody. So the, the different forms, so this deals with school-sponsored fundraisers. So fundraising requests have, have to meet policy guidelines and allow all students to participate, participate in curricular and co-curricular activities, even if they are unable to participate in fundraising activities. There is a change here in that Form 511-A dash one has been modified, and it is called the fundraiser approval form, and includes a stipulation that food sold during the school day as part of a fundraiser must meet the Smart Snacks guideline. Forms must be approved and retained by building administration and submitted to the business services, and submitted to business services, who will provide present, and who will present the information once per year to the school board under the consent agenda. I think she, Jean, basically said that was a small kind of tweak, because we needed to use the Smart Snacks instead of, and that was the main, that was the main.
Seven point oh five, closed session for an expulsion.
Pursuant to Minnesota Statutes, Section thirteen D, point zero five, subdivision two A three, I make a motion to move into closed session for consideration of educational data and the administration's recommendation with respect to the proposed removal from enrollment of students who are not in compliance with requirements Minnesota Statutes, Section one twenty-one A, point one five.
Second. All those in Kegel, please say aye.
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 We will move into closed session at eight o'clock PM. We are reconvening at eight oh eight PM. Seven point oh six, expulsion of student C seventeen who violated school board policy four seventeen, chemical use and abuse, and policy five oh six, student discipline. This is an action item. Whereas the administration, no, do I start there, or do I start down here?
Be resolved.
Now be it resolved, okay, good. Now, therefore, be it resolved as follows. The school board hereby accepts and adopts the facts and conclusions outlined in the notice of proposed expulsion as the basis for its decision. Two, the school board hereby expels the student from the schools of Independent School District Number five thirty-five, Rochester, from October seventeenth, twenty seventeen, through June seventh, twenty eighteen. Three, the superintendent or a designee is directed to mail the following to the student and to the student's parent. A copy of this resolution and a letter stating that the student has been expelled from October seventeenth, twenty seventeen, through June seventh, twenty eighteen, and may apply to resume attending school in the district the first school day after the period of expulsion ends. Four, the superintendent or a designee is directed to identify the alternative educational service... services or special education and related services that are available to the student during the period of expulsion, if the student wishes to take advantage of them. Five, the superintendent or a designee is directed to make an electronic report of this expulsion to the commissioner of the Minnesota Department of Education within 30 calendar days, as required under Minnesota statutes, section 121A, point 53. Be it further resolved that the student is not allowed on any Rochester Public Schools' property except for the building to which the student is assigned, nor is the student allowed to participate in any extracurricular school activities during the period of this expulsion.
With approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Appalled, motion carries. We are adjourning at 8:10 PM.